Okay, Patty can call the roll. Yeah.
Sims?
Here.
Howsh?
Here.
Not present is Councilmember Judith Hembling. Also present Assistant Village Manager, Finance Director Melissa Dodd, Park Streets, Wastewater Superintendent Jason Handy, and Electric Water Distribution Johnny Burns. Solicitor Chris Conard and Clerk of Council Judy Kettner have interned.
Yes, thank you. So announcements, I have one. This Thursday at 9:00 a.m. we have a chamber chat. This one will actually be held at the Senior Center. The subject is cybersecurity and Randall East from Tech Advisors and I assume Bartley Davis will be there to talk about issues of cybersecurity for your business and your personal computer. And it's obviously a lot is happening these days, so I think it's a pretty important subject. So everyone is welcome to that whether you're a chamber member or not.
Yeah, I have a few. So first of all, I did want to mention that on August 9th is the deadline for petitions for folks that are interested in running for elected office for the November election. And to clarify, which I know the Y S News will do as well, there are three open seats for Village Council. Also, if you didn't get a chance to see Julius Caesar last weekend, you have another weekend this Friday and Saturday at Mills Lawn School. It's amazing. On July 22nd, we have the 365 Project, one of their walking tours that are highlighting black African-Americans in Yellow Springs. And that starts at 1:00 p.m. at Mills Lawn, sorry, at Mills Park Hotel, at least from there. And finally, we have announced the next Village Inspiration and Design Award, and it's going to the House of Ohm. If you haven't been to King's Yard in the last couple of days, check it out because the award, the traveling trophy that John Hudson created is there. And there is a reception open to the public on July 26th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m.
I have a press release that we've been given about a forum on Friday, July 28th in this building in the gymnasium called "An Open Forum on Concerns Regarding Understanding Mental Illness and Addictions." And the woman who's presenting the forum is Alicia Williams, who has a Bachelor of Science from Antioch College and is a social worker. And I don't know anything more about this. Maybe there will be something in the paper or some other information about the presentation. Anyway, it's free and open to the public, and if you, there's a voluntary $5 donation if you wish. Okay? I know that there's something happening on a training on the 20th. Pat?
It's, oh, okay. Our cap training. Johnny, do you have that map that you were going to get? Yes, the Rural Communities Assistance Program has asked our utilities departments to participate in a field day, a training field day. And this is in my report. We will have some road closures. I think Cory Street is going to be closed at a certain point. He's pointing to Jason. So Jason, do you know what the road closures specifically will be?
I think we know. Johnny and I talked about it around Glen at Cory.
Can you come up, please, so that people can? Our cap is coming out, and there are going to be about 100 visitors in town just for this trading and event. Many of them are staying overnight.
Yeah, and the logistics are still trying to be ironed out. We're having a lot of issues with people trying to get in because it's such a huge draw. But right now, we have Glen Street at Cory shut down, and then we're going to have North Fairfield underneath the bridge shut down as well, so.
Will those be all day or just part of the day? Do you know?
Those will be part of the day, but they'll have all-day training going on, so we'll be having it back and forth. So we'll try to keep it closed most of the day, but we'll let everybody know. I've already let Miami Township know. I'll let the fire department know and the police department as well.
And, I mean, since we're talking about it, there was some public engagement opportunity to see how equipment works?
Yes. Our cap has said that if somebody is walking by or driving by and they want to see the piece of equipment that's being demonstrated and people are being trained on, they're welcome to stop. You know, just be aware of the safety precautions if someone asks you to not stand somewhere or whatever. But the public is welcome to stop and see those demonstrations and participate in some small way to understand a little bit better what the crews do and how they affect the utilities, that kind of thing. And parking will be at a premium at both the Bryan Center and the lot at 102 Dayton because we are having so many people come to this.
Okay, great. Thank you. That should be fun.
And I have two more if everyone else is. We do have peak shaving coming up three days this week. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday are supposed to be some of the hottest days of the year so far, all in the 90 or above category. So there is peak shaving from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Also, on Monday, July 24th, they will be replacing the 16-inch water main at the water plant. This is the main that carries the finished water out into the system. So we are, we will not be producing water at the plant on Monday. You should watch for discolored water. And we are also asking residents to conserve water Monday through Wednesday or until such time as we post a notice that you don't have to anymore. We're not expecting any problems with replacing this line, but we will be running entirely off of the towers during the period that the line is being replaced. So please be cognizant of that, and please be patient with the brown water if you do experience it. It's because we're replacing this large line.
Thanks, Patty. Just to remind people that this is all part of the progress of getting a new water plant, and there will be some bumps in the road along the way as we make the transition over. So this will probably not be the first time we ask for patience as we go online with that plant and get ready to go online. Next, we have the consent agenda. We have the minutes of July 3rd, regular meeting, and financials for June of 2017. Can I have motion, please?
I have a concern about the financials.
Okay.
So I'll just state.
So I guess we'll just pull it out?
Okay.
Or I guess we don't have to, I mean, we can just take the vote. Why don't we, you know, just address your concerns, your questions. Melissa, I guess, would be.
Well, no, it's actually to Council and Jerry, I guess.
Okay.
I don't feel very competent at looking at the whole, how many, 40-some pages of financials every month. And I'm concerned that maybe some of us sometimes don't, and yet we're approving them, and that concerns me. I mean, I'm not saying I don't, I think there's any problem with them, but I don't feel real comfortable approving something that I haven't really thoroughly read, and it feels like over the top to thoroughly read it. So that's a concern I have. I mean, Jerry, are you thoroughly, I mean, I'd just like to know that this is really being read.
Yeah, I guess the only other thing would be, I don't know how much earlier we can get them out.
I put them in to the second packet, or the second meetings packet, because I get the bank statement online. I mean, they don't even mail them until after the first week, so the 7th or the 8th of the month. But I get them online ahead of time, so I can start reconciling. So the soonest I can get it in is this meeting unless I do it a month later.
Actually, what I'm saying is I think that it is over the top to expect each council member to read through 40-some pages.
Okay. So this is a new phenomenon. It's only been in the past couple of years that we've been approving these financials. Is that something that's been just mandated by the state?
The auditor actually, the auditor actually cited us because financials were not presented to council on a regular basis, so that's why we do it.
But what does that mean, a regular basis? Is that, is that once a month? Is it, could it be once a quarter? Could we take maybe a half an hour during the quarter to review them?
I can clarify that.
And have it as a more formal process?
I can clarify that, yeah, certainly.
I would appreciate.
Yeah, and the other thing, you know, if Melissa has some concerns with them, she lets me know. So, and they've been pretty standard as of late, but.
Well, I guess I also wonder, you know, could, you know, if we could highlight some trends in the financials, that might be a good way just to kind of, you know, do like a top-level overview. I mean, I do always look at them. They seem like there's not a whole lot of excitement, which is probably good.
Mm-hmm.
But that being said, yeah, maybe, you know, like Karen said, if quarterly, we could do that, like, high level.
And have it as an agenda item, a separate agenda item. Yep.
We could probably bring back some pie charts and so forth on a quarterly basis and so on.
But that doesn't necessarily alleviate Mary Ann's concerns about this 40-page document that we're getting, that we're getting every month.
Well, we'll check, but right now, like I say, it wasn't an audit finding.
Right, right. So it's important that we do this.
Well, it'd certainly make a difference, I think, to actually spend some time going over it quarterly.
Okay, I'll check.
Let's see if we can do that.
I'll check.
So let's go ahead and take the vote now. We'll see. If you want to abstain, Mary Ann, you're welcome to do that.
I mean, I did look at them.
Yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did we, wait, did we have the motion in the first?
No.
Okay, we need a motion.
Well, I made a motion. I don't know if you got a second.
A second.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to a review of the agenda, do we have anything we want to add or change in the agenda? Okay, we will. Brian, would you review the petitions and communications, please?
Yeah, so actually, two of our communications we had on the table at our last meeting, but I'll just mention them again. One was the short letter from Bruce Brad Miller mentioning that he didn't have a strong opinion about the lodging tax, but he thought it should apply to everybody that it could apply to if we were going to levy one. And then also, we had the letter from John Gudjul supporting the village policing guidelines, in particular highlighting some of the suggestions that 365 Project mentioned, which we did discuss at length at the last meeting. And then the last thing is we had two press releases from Green County Public Health. One of those was highlighting crash statistics for this year. Most of the problems have to do with distracted driving, but one thing that was notable was a minimal of accidents caused by drunk driving. And then the second one was about TICs in particular, and it's a two-page document that highlights a lot of, I guess, tactics for minimizing some of the terrible things that TICs can cause.
Thank you. Moving on to public hearings and legislation. First is Resolution 2017-37. We can read this in by title only. Judy?
All right, this is authorizing the village manager to enter into an amendment to cemetery street development agreement with Yellow Springs Home Inc. to remove language requiring construction of a berm.
Can I get a motion, please?
I move.
Second.
Okay. Emily was at the last meeting, really talking about another project, but we did address this. Patty, go on, you go ahead. You did prepare the information that we discussed.
Absolutely. The village entered into the development agreement with Home Inc. for the four lots on Cemetery Street, and that development agreement required either the village or Home Inc. to put a berm in to divide the rest of the property, the remaining property owned by the village, from those four lots. Home Inc. has asked that that berm requirement be waived, and it's my understanding that council, I was not here at the last meeting, but that council did agree to waive that berm as we no longer believe that we will make that a parking lot, and if we do make it a parking lot, we can add the berm later.
Correct. And the responsibility for the berm was pretty ambiguous. It said either the village or Home Inc. So since it really, at this point, doesn't appear necessary, and I do believe that there were some, and I know this is a totally separate discussion, but there was some debris.
It's gone.
It's gone, perfect. So things are, things are kind of back to normal on Cemetery Street?
They are. Home Inc. removed the debris and the pile of dirt, and they're back. I think Jason's crew is maintaining our part of that property on a regular basis, and we're where we need to be right now.
Great. Jason, do you know if people park there on the weekends? They do? Okay, good. Do you know if they're mostly using the bike trail or?
Mostly, mostly just walking downtown. I, one of the local guys that lives here said that once the Xenia Avenue fills up, that's when they start parking.
Great, okay.
Almost like Shuiper, like, oh, well, that's.
Okay, well, thanks. Any questions or comments from council? Comments or questions from citizens? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then the next one? Judy?
Title only?
Yes.
This is awarding a contract for utility, electric utility line clearing and tree trimming.
Can I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Okay. Patty, you're going to take that, or we're going to ask Johnny to?
You want to take? This is the annual line clearing that the village does every year around the electric poles. It went out for competitive bid. As has been the case in the past several years, Arbor Care was the low bidder at $92,000. This will be Section 4, which I believe is Fair Acres and up. So it looked like it was actually farther south than Fair Acres and south.
There it is.
Yes, Fair Acres and south.
Pleasant Street is part of it.
To Dayton Street, yes, I see it.
Okay.
And that includes the Bryan Center and Cemetery Street as well.
Great.
So Patty, since, I guess, it's coming up a little bit later, is this $92,000 part of the $900,000 in clearing that needs to be done, or is this kind of a different?
No, the $900,000 that you're talking about, that was cited in the fiber project, is from the, is it the three-phase, Johnny?
The secondary below.
The secondary below. This is for the secondary and above. We only trim up into the wires.
Okay.
We don't trim necessarily the bottom access because that would be, first of all, we'd be cutting down a lot of things that a lot of residents want to keep. But secondly, it would be an enormous cost to us.
Okay.
And so what we trim is what keeps it out of the wires and thereby minimizes disruptions to the service.
Thanks.
And coordination with neighbors, and that's all taken care of ahead of time?
Yes, we have to carry it straight to them.
Great.
At least a week before they come.
Great. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Comments or questions from citizens? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now is the time in the agenda where we hear from citizens about items that are not on the agenda. We ask that you come to the podium and state your name and keep your remarks to three Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on. Next, we've got the Fiber Advisory Board Report. How is that going to move forward? Are we going to have?
Yeah, I am going to introduce Tim Barhorst and Scott Fife from SpringsNet/Village Managers' Fiber Advisory Board.
Okay.
Good evening. As Patty said, my name is Tim Barhorst, and at the previous managers advisory board meetings, we discussed the fact that public funding is limited, and the village council and staff thinks the risk of failure based on interpretation of the Design 9 report is pretty high. And there are additional concerns about the cost of building a network and the resulting cost of service. And there seem to be also concerns that the network would possibly contribute to the gentrification of the village and higher housing costs. So along with the challenge in the expense of the tree trimming, which we just discussed, the alleyways, which by the way, Scott Fife and I took a tour with Johnny a couple weeks ago of the alleyways, and they are sincerely blocked by a lot of overgrowth. And I think it's, you know, there's some hazardous places where equipment and trucks just cannot get through. At some point, that needs to be addressed. So there are other infrastructure projects that are obviously using lots of tax dollars, the new water plant, the fire station, potential tax increases for new school buildings. So property taxes are already high enough. So one, one point we do feel is worth investigation is still looking at a revenue bond as a possibility without spending a great deal of money and time looking at that. We took another look at the Design 9 report, including financial spreadsheet data, and we just want to make note of the following areas. The other cost on the summary tab of a spreadsheet that included tree trimming included a particularly large amount for project management. It's worth further discussion. The 900K for tree trimming could be distributed among multiple village projects. There's $427,000 project management figure, which seemed remarkably high to us and could possibly be avoided depending on the chosen vendor. Project management could also be handled by local resources. Another item that we thought was worth looking at or reviewing, at least mentioning, is the $113,000 in office expenses. If the service is managed as a contracted service, this would not make any sense. The staff salary item is also much more than anticipated and would seem to imply village operation without contracted support. So we believe Design 9 has overlooked a number of critical advantages that Yellow Springs holds over most municipalities, considering such a project, including the relatively small, compact, and static village footprint, which is easier to plan and we require less fiber optic cable, the significant value added by the presence and mission of Mifekka within the village, and the history of the village as a public utility provider. So the Scenario 1 model, Design 9, that they presented in the report, we think with substantial variations warrants further investigation. So in that light, the directive was to find alternative methods to build and finance a fiber network for the village that attracts new business, is in sync with community values, and emphasizes affordability. So a group of us on June 23rd had a conference call with Deb Socia of Next Century Cities. And along that same time, we also heard from Chris Mitchell of the Institute for Self-Reliance. The following were some recommendations they made. The first one was that more strategic planning is very important and a must for our village. So in that light, we consulted with Jory Wolf. He's the former CIO of Santa Monica, California CityNet. He's currently a consultant for Magellan Associates, and he made a commitment to me to promise to give an additional analysis of the Design 9 summary, which I expect to see in the next couple of weeks. Second recommendation was that public-private, excuse me, partnerships should be investigated. So we contacted Ting and ACD from Michigan. I just talked to Thor Sage this afternoon, and we expect a proposal of some sort from ACD very soon. Ting didn't seem so interested, but the person at Ting was very encouraging about our endeavors. And she said to continue trying, she said it's very difficult. Another recommendation was that an incremental step-by-step approach could be considered. You could build out small sections that are affordable in neighborhoods that seem to already have a high interest level. It was a conversation on a conference we had with an individual named Bruce Patterson from Ammon, Idaho, and he uses what's called local improvement districts. Very enlightening conversation. For any of those that want to listen to the conference call, there's a link there in the, included in the packet. Another recommendation was to investigate the cooperative model. We were researching a model utilized by RS Fiber in Minnesota, and in that light, we had a conference call with a gentleman named Mark Erickson on June 27th. He formed, along with several other principals, a cooperative named RS Fiber. It consists of multiple municipalities that sold general obligation tax abatement bonds at 4.5% and loaned those funds to the co-op, and the co-op in turn makes payments. So another recommendation was to reduce costs. We should consider cooperative relationships with other regional partners like Green County or Cedarville. We happen to know that Cedarville has already formed a cooperative, and we're going to be in further conversation with them about that. The last recommendation was to get firm commitments from citizens and especially businesses and do some more public outreach and get more people involved. So in conclusion, there remains a convincing case for the development of a fiber optic municipal network in our village. We are currently examining public-private partnerships as well as forming a nonprofit or cooperative. At this point, we are leaning towards the nonprofit cooperative model. And along with operation and management of the network, the nonprofit could also do three other things. Could provide training and mentoring to local people, as people that have lived in the village a certain length of time, and Yellow Springs High School graduates, to prepare them for jobs in the IT field. It might also work with a relationship with the schools. It could provide assistance to local small businesses to help improve their use of broadband and information technology with the goal of helping them expand their employment of local people. And third, it could help Yellow Springs seniors and families with kids in school get a computer and provide basic training in how to use it. We think the nonprofit would have a minimal staff. It would organize and leverage volunteers and existing programs. It would facilitate networking and provide a neutral and a trusted place to get broadband and technology assistance. It would also make a commitment to having a reduced subscription or connection rate for low-income households, including people that live in home incorporated houses in Green Met. The federal broadband lifetime, Lifeline program could also provide part of the subsidy. So continued work on strategic planning for the village is vitally important. Having conducted significant research into building and operating a municipal fiber-to-the-premise network as members of the SpringsNet group, the goals of the project outlined to council in February 2016 remain achievable, vital to our economic future, and consistent with our character as a progressive community. Our goal is a network that is inclusive, affordable for all, and one that encourages the kind of business growth and development that is in alignment with the values of Yellow Springs. If appropriate sources of funding can be obtained, we believe this network can contribute greatly to the affordability solution instead of being part of the problem. So we're continuing our research, and we'll report future findings to council as they become available. Thank you, that's it. Any questions?
Yes. First, I would really like to thank you, guys, I guess it's all guys, for continuing to work on this. I know it, from the report that we had, it seemed like it could be very expensive, but I also think it would be really vital to our community. So I really appreciate that you're volunteering your time.
We all feel very strongly. We're going to be meeting again in the near future.
So I had two questions from your report. On the first recommendation, you said more strategic planning is a must for our village. So the question is, is this in general or in particular about this? That's the first question. And the other question is, who in Cedarville is doing the co-op? Is it the village government or the university?
It's, from my understanding, and I haven't talked personally to anybody at Cedarville, Thor Sage has been leading that effort. It's, from what I understand, though, it's primarily a lot of the businesses in Cedarville are gathered together to do this.
There aren't a lot of businesses in there.
Right. But that being said, I've attended a couple meetings, and it is the small businesses in town. I mean, the university is, is part of this, but it really has been driven by the businesses.
I would like to get back to you on the strategic planning because this consultant I've talked to, Jory, he went on for about a half hour talking about how all these things interel, fit together in Santa Monica, California. Now, they're a much larger community, but he didn't see any issue with, you know, our size as being, making it, whether as a doable project or not. I mean, strategic planning is things like, you know, dig-once policies and things like that that interconnect with what the fiber would do for the village in terms of other utilities. So I don't know, Scott, do you have anything to say about strategic planning? It was, it was a recommendation and there, that the Deb Socia really gave to us about, you know, seeing things through from top to bottom, not just the fiber project, in other words, how it interconnects with other projects.
Do you believe that there's grant funding out there available for a nonprofit entity?
If we expanded our horizons a little bit and started looking at rural areas, there's federal funding that could be applied for that. I know that for a fact. For the village itself, I haven't seen a lot of available grant money. In Idaho, he was able to get some grants from the state, as well as, I think he got, he had a whole com- he had a whole combination of money, but they did pass a bond in Idaho.
I mean, I do know that in the county, in the rural areas of the county, it's a huge problem. The library is actually going to start, it's going to purchase and distribute, or not just purchase, for distribution with your library card, hotspots that are, that people can go in and get for a week because there are areas of the county. I mean, if a student's writing a paper, they don't have any internet access. So, it is a huge problem. So, any way that that could be connected in would be a boon to the project and for the county also.
Well, that would be one valid, a big advantage of a co-op is that we could expand our horizons a little bit and wouldn't have to necessarily limit it to the village boundary itself.
And Green County has been at the table with the Cedarville project, so that's promising.
So, yeah, we'll probably be in further communication with them. I know Thor's had, aside from Brian, has had a couple of conversations with them about.
Well, and also, I, you know, Thor's doing things north too, so, you know, connecting in with Clark County and, you know, things that are going on up 68 wouldn't hurt either. We can cross county lines, for sure.
Sure.
Okay.
Is there any role with the Economic Sustainability Commission in this?
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I think you guys were planning to come to a meeting, was that?
I think there were some discussions about that. Nothing's been set up, but I think that would be an excellent idea to further some communication there.
Definitely, yeah. I mean, I will highlight, one of the conversations I was on was the Ammon, Idaho model, and it was really interesting because it's totally driven by citizens. So, you know, and that's where they've cut out the risk by basically, you know, if people want it, they're going to invest in it, and...
And he was surprised about how many invested in it in a very conservative Donald Trump-type community.
Were they served?
They were served. Well, some of them were. The logistics of how he did it though was very interesting. I think they had, similar to us, he had a cable provider and an AT&amp;T DSL offering and stuff like that. It was very, because Ammon, Idaho isn't a whole lot larger than Yellow Springs. I think they're about 10,000. So, he made it work, and he, I mean, if we could hire him, we might be able to figure something out.
I have a question for you. On one of your points in your conclusion, you talk about you were leaning more toward a nonprofit cooperative model. Am I hearing that to say that the village itself would not be a part of it?
Well, there could be some possible covenants. The nonprofit, in our preliminary estimate, would be actual, would be, you know, managing and administering the network, and perhaps also building it out, but would probably need some financial assistance from the municipality to finance some of it. So, that's one model. There's a number of ways a nonprofit could work, but it would offload the village as being the primary, you know, entity responsible for the network.
Jerry, in my recommendation, where I say that I think that it's wise to let SpringsNet investigate the co-op model because I think that that is the best way for us to go, the village can do things like give free pole attachments and work in things like that, and if the nonprofit comes back to the village in the future for something else, you know, we can certainly discuss it.
Yeah, this one's...
Mark Erickson in Minnesota used a whole variety of financing methods for these six or seven municipalities that banded together, but the co-op actually manages and runs the network. But he actually got loans from the municipalities, and with a contingency that if their payments on the loans ran short, that they would, every residence would pay an increase, a slight increase in property tax, like $10 more a month if they didn't make the payment. And so far, he's made all the payments. And plus, he got a bank loan and a couple other sources of funding, and a grant from the state, I believe, as well.
So, you know, I'm not trying to push, what kind of a timeframe are you guys thinking to kind of move further and to be ready to come back to council with more information?
I would say within 90 days, we'll have some other ideas that we can present.
Okay, great.
And by the way, Tim, I did check, it was Clearfield was the company that, when I was in Minnesota for the conference.
Oh, the one you couldn't remember when we were on conference.
Yes, right, so...
And I would just like to take this opportunity to thank SpringsNet and the village managers, Fiber Advisory Board, it's the same group of gentlemen. They've worked really hard on this. They've put a lot of sweat equity into this, and I appreciate what you're trying to do for the village.
Or on continuing our efforts.
We just need to find the right way.
Yep, thanks. And yeah, thanks, Scott. Thanks to all of you. We look forward to hearing from you again. I assume we do not have an HRC annual report, Mary Ann?
Apparently, we do not.
Okay.
I've been in communication with Steve, and thought he was going to be here, and he's not.
So, moving on to old business, the housing needs assessment.
And Liz Voight, I anticipate her to be here at 7:45, which is...
So, okay, so let's do the council goals review, and I don't even know if this was intended to be on this agenda. I wanted to put it on just, because it was actually pretty easy to just go ahead. I mean, it is mid-year, so, or a little bit past mid-year. I don't want it to go too much farther. So, you can see my notations, my colored, my colorful notations, and some things, it seemed obviously that the specific activities in the middle column was easier to address there. Some of the other things are a little bit more general, like the developed strategy for fiscal sustainability. Those particular activities are a little bit more general. So, you know, we can bring it back, would probably be a good idea to bring it back to a meeting where Judith will be in attendance, just to maybe get some feedback on what everybody's thinking at this point as far as the notations, how things are going, and any changes you might want to see in this format.
And I did notice on the glass farm, I think it would be good to include the wetlands reconstruction, and that should be completed by the end of...
In, as one of the activities?
One, six, yes, as, yes, as one of that.
Okay.
And then to Councilantros could be listed also as our resource.
Do we want to review the entire document, or do we want to just maybe save that for when Judith comes back?
Let's save, so we don't do it twice.
Right, okay.
I'm okay with saving. I do want to mention though, with the dig-ones policy, you know, while we have talked about that this is kind of our practice, we have not formalized that yet.
So, I'll make that green?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think it would be an easy thing to do.
So, we'll add the wetlands reconstruction, and then you said, so it would be over in this last category, we'll add TLT, okay. Yeah. Okay, so we'll bring that back. I don't know if we'll do it for the August meeting or September, the first meeting in September. We can talk about that during agenda planning. So, I see our guest has arrived. So, Mary Ann, why don't you introduce her, please?
Yeah, okay. Liz, would you come up here? So, Liz Voight has graciously agreed to talk with us about housing needs assessment, which we're currently working on. Liz and her husband moved, when did you move here?
This fall, October.
Several months ago, planning on settling down, and her husband's, did he grow up here?
No, his father grew up here.
And then he got another job that he couldn't refuse, so she's in the middle of packing, and, but she graciously agreed to come. So, Liz has been a consultant on housing and fair housing issues. She was a special assistant to the General Counsel of HUD, and previous to that, she was with Public Advocates, Inc. in San Francisco. So, she, more than I'm sure anyone else in this village, probably in Green County, knows about housing and housing issues. So, given that we're still thinking about what we, what is a housing needs assessment, what do we want in it, it seemed like a really opportune time to have Liz come and give her thoughts on this, so take it away.
Good evening. In addition to being a resident of Yellow Springs, I'm also on the board of Yellow Springs Home, Inc. So, I, as Councilmember McQueen said, I am, my background is in housing with a particular focus on fair housing, and a lot of that work is in bigger cities, but I have seen a fair amount of housing planning-related activities from the federal perspective and also from the local perspective. And so, she asked me to come and share some thoughts. So, I've prepared some comments, but I'm also just happy to answer questions to the best of my ability. But I did have some particular recommendations as we sort of look forward to the upcoming housing needs assessment. And the first thing I'll start with is the big takeaway from my experience is to make sure that the process isn't a paper exercise, which I'm sure is not your goal, but way too many places spend precious public resources on a process that results in a report that sits on a shelf. And so, but I think there are ways to avoid that. I think it's an important thing to really understand the needs before you take action, and there are lots of ways to do that in a way that can be a really meaningful process. So, I have a few particular recommendations to that end. So, the first relates to the data analysis, which is sort of the core place to start with a needs assessment, right? There's lots of ideas floating in the air, but to really ground a needs assessment in reality, you need to start with data. And so, this will obviously depend, what exactly what kind of data you or a consultant that you hire looks at will depend on the goals and the direction you give them. But generally, the, a needs assessment or a housing policy planning process will look at housing stock and housing costs, population demographics, including race and income, segregation patterns, imbalances between housing costs and income, imbalances between housing supply and demand, available land for development, among many other things. And we can talk more about some of those, and I'm not an expert in the data piece, but happy to talk more about that. So, there are two things I want to say about the data that are sort of maybe not obvious. The first is to make sure the data, for the data analysis to be meaningful, I strongly encourage you to look at trends over time and not just a point-in-time picture of the housing stock and needs. So, looking at several decades, and this is all census data, or the vast majority of what you'd look at is census data, so it's just as easily available for the last 40 years as it is for the last census. And so, to look at trends over time, over several decades, will help you understand what's been happening around housing availability and affordability, and how that's impacted who lives in the village, who can't live in the village, the kind of financial pressures residents are under, and how life has been changing. And then having that backwards look helps you understand the trajectory you're on. So, you can't really make plans for the future without understanding how housing has impacted the trajectory that the village is on. And this, I think that this idea of trends over time and the changes that have been happening because of housing is especially important for the values of inclusion and diversity that I know that the village holds dear. And that'll be a common theme in the points that I make because that's my background, and I know that's an important point for the village and for your goals. So, the second recommendation I make around the data analysis is to not artificially look at the data, to not artificially limit the boundaries to the village boundaries. So, of course, you're doing a plan for the village, and you're the decision-makers for the village, but fair housing planning guidelines and progressive places that want to be thoughtful about how they think about their housing policies include in their assessments a look at the region. So, in here, I think a regional look would include some data, some sense of how the village compares to the Dayton-Springfield metro area. So, this will understand, it will help you understand what's happening with people who work here but can't afford to live in the village, or families who've left because they no longer can afford to stay. Just the realities of the community is that you're situated in a larger housing and job market. I don't want to, I know the village is small, Mary Ann says that, you know, the resources are constrained, so I'm not suggesting a very expensive process or suggesting a plan that you should be planning for the full, the region's housing needs by any means. But when you have a sense of the housing costs in the region compared to the village, the demographics of the region compared to the village, that will help you paint a real picture of what's going on in the housing market and what's needed. And this is especially important under fair housing law.
Are there organizations, I mean, other government organizations that would be cooperative with us in that?
So, I mean, the county is, so there are other governmental entities in the area that have obligations to HUD to look at some of these pieces that you don't have as a smaller village, but so the county has obligations to conduct an assessment of fair housing, the city of Dayton does, and then connect that. And I know, so I know the HUD planning process is best. I'm not as familiar with the Ohio plan, and Emily is here from Home, so she can maybe answer some of those pieces. But, yeah, so some of that county-wide data should already be available for Green County through their HUD required assessments. So, that will be helpful. And this too is, you know, sort of basic sense of demographics and housing costs is all census data as well. So, if you're hiring a consultant, you're just asking essentially for the sort of denominator in the comparisons to be compared to the region for some of this.
Then actually, Mary Ann, Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission has an amazing database of demographics that they've put together, and that's eight county...
Right, right.
Regions, yeah.
So, does HUD have some sort of guidelines about doing this, or?
So, there are two things that jurisdictions that directly receive money from HUD, so counties and large cities generally. So, one is called an assessment of fair housing, which will include a lot of what I'm talking about in terms of trends over time and regional data, and a particular look at segregation patterns, right, racial segregation patterns. That's what the Fair Housing Act is focused on. So, there's actually a new set of guidelines that came out of HUD in 2015. I don't think anyone in the immediate area has conducted their assessment under these new guidelines, but there are guidelines, and I'm happy to share links to those kinds of things. It's pretty onerous. I mean, it's not unrealistic for a large city, but it's a big undertaking, but it has really, I think it would be very helpful direction to give a consultant about some of the core pieces. And I think there are lots of places that are starting to do these analyses before they're even required because they want to be thoughtful about the fair housing issues in their community. So, that's one. And then the other HUD guideline is, so the assessment of fair housing, which is something I'm going to talk about, is now linked to action, right? So, you just don't want to just look at this data and say, wow, now we have a better understanding of our community, which is great, but like, what's the step after that? How do you link it to action? So, in the HUD set of requirements, it links to what's called the consolidated plan, which is the five-year plan for how you're going to spend all your housing dollars, or your federal dollars that relate to housing. So, those are similar requirements that will apply to the county and to large cities in the area. I think you could actually be more tailored in the action component than the consolidated plan, which is like a very lengthy document, pretty focused on federal funding. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about that if you want me to continue.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, those are sort of the two big points I would make about the data analysis. I'm going to come back to some ideas about how to get resources to be more specific, like in an RFP or consultant. But the next thing I want to make sure to highlight is that you don't want to just look at data, right? Like, this needs to be grounded in community and the community's perspective on the needs and the goals that you're setting based on those needs. And so, my next recommendation relates to meaningful community engagement. And this means making sure that you're not just talking to the usual players, and that you're not just having a single notice meeting and expecting people to come when they're putting their kids to bed, and, right, which is of course how government works, but that like you, that you go out to the community and engage people where they are and speak to them in a language that makes sense, and that you're engaging a diverse set of community constituents in doing that. And I think one of the exciting things about Yellow Springs is that you have so many community organizations that already have members and meetings, and you can go directly to them, and you can actually engage them to be your partners in this process. You could have a task force of a handful of community groups that represent diverse constituents of the community to collect information about their housing needs and with some specific questions that are part of the analysis process. The other thing I would recommend in addition to being collaborative and thinking outside the box on who you're speaking to in the community is that the community engagement is iterative. So, sort of too often, we have a fully drafted report, and you have a slideshow like this, and these wonderful people are here, and people have to react in real time in public comment, right? And this stuff is hard, and your personal familial situation fits into that data mapping, I'm not sure. But so, a process that says, you know, there's a chance to see the first set of data and digest it a little, come back to a next conversation, maybe in small groups, and with some community volunteers, I think you could do that in a way that isn't extremely expensive, but is really meaningful. So, I would really recommend that you think about the community organizations as resources to be your partners in this process. to be your partners in this process, as actually helping to staff that community engagement. Again, I'll just note that in many places, the consultant who's hired to do the data analysis is often not the best match for the community engagement. So using people who are already here, bigger progressive cities actually resource their community-based organizations to be the lead on community engagement, and then work with that consultant or some kind of central coordinator so that it's organized. I'll just say one other thing about Yellow Springs is that it's small, right, and these conversations are, I've learned, this is my short time here, like, go back to like, well, my mom, the experience, right, like, there's generations, there's actually an opportunity to not just hear from people, but to facilitate a dialogue on this. And that's not easy, but I think it's really possible here, an exciting opportunity, given the size and the commitment of the community. So I'll just, I know I'm a little bit short on time, but the last piece I want to talk about is this importance of linking what you've learned from the data analysis and the community engagement about needs and goals to action. And I encourage you to think about the action component coming out of this needs to be beyond a single site, because I think much too often, you can't, a single development site can't possibly serve all the needs and goals that the needs assessment is going to reveal. And so you could think of this process as actually helping you set that decision-making of what kind of community do we want to be, and how are we going to get there over years of policy decision-making that you're going to be, and now you have the, the information to be thoughtful about that process. And of course, you're not, this isn't just the only piece of information, you've done other processes, and so you're actually building on previous knowledge. So if I have a minute, I just want to say a little bit about the kinds of action you might want to consider moving forward. So obviously, it's going to depend on what your needs assessment reveals, but local governments have many tools that impact housing availability, affordability, location, condition. So I just want to give a few examples of the kinds of things you might want to think about. So there might, it might come out of the process that you want to increase the overall supply of housing in the market, right? Like, there could be a need that we have people who are looking for homes who could afford a market-rate home in the village but can't find one, and you have tools in your toolbox about increasing the overall supply. We could talk a little bit more about those. But I think it's, and generally, increasing the overall supply will bring down costs a little in the middle, but just increasing the supply is not going to satisfy a need if the assessment shows it for moderate and low-income homeowners, and so, and residents. And so you'll need strategies that help create dedicated, affordable housing. So these will have to come out of your process and your decision-making process, but many places have programs for affordable housing trust funds, for donating land for affordable housing, for placing fees on commercial development for affordable housing, for proactively identifying and rezoning sites for affordable housing, and many others. So there are lots of tools in your toolbox. And then I just want to note that often, there's, there are comments that, that low and moderate income homes don't meet the lowest-income families, and that's often the case. But you have strategies to reach the lowest-income families too, if that's something the needs assessment reveals. And I particularly think about ways to protect families that have Section 8 vouchers, who may want to live in the village. So some jurisdictions will add additional fair housing protection to prohibit discrimination on the basis of what's called source of income or voucher holders. So in Yellow Springs, for instance, you've added an additional anti-discrimination provision for the LGBTQ community, and so you could do something like this to protect voucher holders so they don't face discrimination in the rental market. I'll just note on this, as you think about the policy component, the action plan that comes from the needs assessment, you may carry through a community task force. So if you have a group of diverse community groups that are part of engaging the community on, on understanding the needs and setting the goals, you could also engage them on thinking about policy recommendations and have them do some of the work of drawing on outside resources for coming up with policy solutions. And just on that note of coming up with policy solutions and doing all of this work, there are, there are a few resources I just want to mention to you. So there are some, there's some written materials, like the HUD guidelines, which I'm happy to share links to, and there's a few links to translations of them into English because they're pretty dense. But there are obviously many talented nonprofit and for-profit consultants. I just want to note that there's a, a Case Western, there's a national initiative on mixed-income housing, and they come to mind because they're based here in Ohio, and they may be the kind of academic and nonprofit institution that may be interested in bidding on an RFP that would do a really strong job. And I'm also excited to share that I have colleagues at the Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights Under Law, it's a national civil rights organization, they specialize, the lawyers I work with specialize in fair housing and community development, and they have just coincidentally decided to focus in on southwest Ohio to provide support around fair housing issues there in different parts of the country. And so they would be available to provide some pro bono assistance to the council or to your consultant around, especially around the data analysis components that have fair housing implications. So I look forward to connecting you however that makes the most sense. So those are my thoughts. I wasn't keeping time, I'm sorry. But happy to answer any questions, or?
Well, I have a question. How, how much in, within the RFP, should we put out our values or the kind of community we feel we want to be? I mean, we do have values, and we know that we value diversity, both income and ethnic, racially. We don't want to just be a bedroom community. I mean, there's, we value sustainable development, I mean, environmentally friendly, should things like that be, does that have a place in the RFP to help?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the more agreement you have about what this is going into it, the better it is to give that guidance upfront, and I think it would actually encourage some place. So for instance, the Case Western Center might be more interested because of those values, right? They're interested in helping to build mixed-income communities, they're interested in being part of housing solutions that have racial justice outcomes. And so they're going to be more interested in this than a small community that says, oh, we need some data analysis to build more housing at market rate, and that's all we care about. So you might actually get a different pool of responses.
So I'm also thinking that there, it would, personally, I think it would be great if we'd have some development where the houses were very environmentally friendly and were built to really rigorous standards in terms of energy use. And if we had data that supports there's an interest in whatever it is that we say, I'm assuming that that would help a developer go, oh, this isn't my traditional development, but it seems like there's interest, so I go for it. Is that, can you speak to that?
Well, I think there's sort of a few things, right? I think so one thing is putting out, being clear to the, in the RFP about the stages of analysis you're looking for, right? Like, a housing needs assessment suggests a pretty step-back assessment of housing stock, you know, kind of where are we, and as I was suggesting, where have we gone, and where are we going, and how is housing part of the kind of community we want to be, which I think is a really helpful first step. I think if you're then hoping that consultant will help with the action plan, which I would encourage you to do, either in a phased RFP or in one, then you could make those kinds of value statements on the kinds of policy recommendations you want. I think the other thing is you want to test that theory, right? So what are the trade-offs? Like, I think it's more expensive to build, so what does that mean for overall housing costs? How do we balance our interest in environmental sustainability with our interest in affordability and diversity? And these are the kinds of things that, when you have a comprehensive plan, then you can do them all. And if you have a single site, you probably can't do everything on a single site. So that's why it's important to put out, so sort of come to a clear sense of the whole picture of the needs and goals, and then all of the strategies you need. And so that you, as decision-makers and the community engaging, understand those trade-offs you're making. Like, we say, we, an urban growth boundary is something that in a lot of places, right? We want to stay small, we want to be clear about our environmental impact, that brings up costs, and that maybe is a perfectly, you know, valid decision to make as a community, but let's understand that we're doing that. And what does that mean for the trade-offs of who can live here? And I have, I'm not making a value judgment on that, I, there, you know, but you're making that decision. And so the whole idea of this is that you have full information to make the full set of decisions, and you're engaging in the community in a transparent way about those decisions, and it helps you sort of see a full picture, so.
We made that decision at one time.
Right, right.
So it exists.
Right, I mean, that's the way it is. And then sort of what do we do with that, right? And that's a really important component of the, of the village, and so, but that's the kind of thing that this gives you the chance to do, to understand now what does that mean for other things, along with lots of other cost implications of other, other factors.
So one piece that resonates with me is, is what you talked about with the collaborative aspect with nonprofits, I think that's a great suggestion. Is your experience that working with like a Case Western kind of outfit would be easier to facilitate that?
So I, so I don't know the Case Western folks like as well as I know the Lawyers Committee in terms of their working style, so it's something that I more note because of their reputation nationally in the policy solutions around mixed-income communities, I don't know their work style as well. The Lawyers Committee actually has worked quite a bit on community engagement, where they've been working with the city, or a county, or a town that's required to do a fair housing assessment, and then they need to engage with the community, and Lawyers Committee has helped with some of those processes. So they would definitely have thoughts on that. I can't volunteer them to like be on the ground here as a central coordinator by any means, but they would have some experience. I think you actually have some experienced organizers in the community, so you might think about the resources here so that you have some pairing of like, community-grounded, a table of diverse folks with some kind of coordination that's local, and then that outside expertise on the housing matters likely through your consultant, or maybe it's a second phase of a consultant, depending on who you pick from the RFP. But usually, there's a local organization that would take the lead on a coalition table like that.
And we, you know, we've got Coupa, we've got Wright State, Coupa, they might, they might have something that would be helpful. Is it your experience that out of these kinds of studies and this kind of work, that, that developers will come to the table, and that this, this work is basically preparing a roadmap for developers to be interested in a community?
What developers want to know is, is predictability, right? Like, they want to know the rules of the game, and then how they can make money or fulfill their mission, depending on if they're a for-profit or a mission-driven nonprofit, right? So I think definitely, I mean, in a lot of communities, it's only the developers at the table, which is why I made such a strong point about community engagement, which is obviously, I know your interest already and just the values of the village. But yeah, I think, I think you could expect that. I don't know the community as well, I don't know, Emily, if you have anything to add, but that would, that would be my expectation.
Yeah, I'm personally looking for a mix of developers. I'm looking for market rate and folks like Home, Inc. to, to, you know, kind of, to be attracted to Yellow Springs.
And I think it'll be great to hear from developers for more, if you're, if one, as I said, like, one of the pieces of the goals could be more market rate development, right? That's what you want to see in the village, is more homes. Bringing developers to the table and help in figuring out essentially, how do you bring, likely what they want to know is how, how can we make it less expensive to develop here? We'll develop more if it's less expensive to develop here, right? Like, that's sort of their basic. And so then you'll have decisions to make. If they say what we want to build is multifamily housing, we want denser housing that's cheaper to build, that's, could be something you hear, and then you take that into consideration. But I think it's important to hear that perspective.
So I understand from Marion that you're actually going to be leaving us?
On Thursday.
Oh, my gosh.
But I, I'm certainly committed to supporting Home, Inc. in whatever role makes sense, and the village, so I will, and I have promised Lawyers Committee, who I convinced to do this, that I would help to be a link, so, you know, and yeah, as, as Marion said, that Yellow Springs has a family tie for us, so, yeah.
Well, thank you for coming. Thank you for this great information. Nice to meet you.
We see you.
Sorry to see you go. Yeah, any other questions or comments? Anything to add?
Okay.
Great, thank you so much.
Sure.
Good luck.
Thanks, Lynn.
Your next, your next home. So why don't we go ahead and, go ahead and do your, your report on the Complete Streets workshop.
I noticed that, did you?
Yeah, okay. Complete Streets. So the document that I provided for the packet highlights our council goal related to really active transportation, and some pretty interesting dots have been connected, as Patty knows, and I'm not sure that all council are aware. The technical assistance grant that the Active Transportation Committee applied for on behalf of the village was, we got it. And so basically, we have a consultant from ODOT, Ohio Department of Transportation, to help us walk through the active transportation planning process. Just kind of to remind folks, a lot of this was tied to work we've done related to sidewalks, and, you know, some of the other things that we want to make sure, you know, make us, you know, a welcoming community in terms of getting around. And the Complete Streets policy, I see it as a way to sort of tee up the planning process. MVRPC, Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission, since we are a member, offers this training for free, and we can basically outline what we think is most important. So I've put together a proposal of what I think could happen, and I also included a template for an agenda based on a scoping meeting that Marion and I had with some village staff. So the first step that I'm recommending is that we have a half-day Complete Streets workshop, and this is going to be primarily for staff, for council members. I would encourage all council members to attend, I think of it kind of like a working session to answer a lot of our questions. And then I also mentioned other stakeholders, so I know Active Transportation Committee folks are planning to attend, some of them. We've talked about business owners, and I welcome any thoughts about who we should invite. There's not a limit on size, it will be a publicly announced meeting, so it is open to the public, but, but the target will really be on laying all the groundwork for what we need to do for a policy. One thing I thought we could discuss is this idea of having a community forum to talk about what a Complete Streets policy would look like for Yellow Springs. For every municipality, it's different, but I guess I'd like feedback about whether council thinks that's a good idea to pursue. And then following that, forming a policy working group. So this would be a subcommittee, a few staff members, a few council members, some people from the Active Transportation Committee that want to actually work on drafting out that Complete Streets policy based on everything we've talked about and the feedback that we've gotten, and then we bring a recommendation to council. So I'm hoping that this can happen relatively soon, because, you know, given the fact that we got that grant, I think it would be nice to go through this process and then get that consultant into the mix to start tackling some of these problems, like, you know, what can we do about our sidewalks? So that's the overall proposal. Any questions, thoughts?
What would you like from council at this point?
I guess two things. One is, is August 24th an okay date for the half-day workshop? And secondly, do we want to pursue a community forum?
Can we decide that, the community forum piece? I mean, that, I would assume that that's going to be when? That would be?
I'd like it to happen, I'd like it all to happen pretty, you know, pretty connected in time, because I think we could finish this goal by 2017 if we're, you know, sort of following a plan for that. And I, I do think if we did do the community forum, it would be with the idea that that would give us direction that would help with the, the active transportation plan for the village. You know, I, I will point out, we haven't had that much success with attendance for community forums, so that is my caveat, but, you know, it's something that MVRPC is willing to help facilitate.
I think we really need to engage the schools, and we really need to engage, it would be good to engage the township, the fire department. So, you know, I'm thinking about this joint meeting that we're talking about, although, is that being talked about after the first of the year, is that potentially?
Yeah, no.
Okay, okay, so forget that.
But still, we should invite those folks.
So, Brian, what are you thinking? Are you thinking like right after Labor Day or before the half-day workshop?
The community piece?
Yeah.
I think it would be better for it to happen after the workshop, but, you know, but soon after. And, you know, this, the idea here would really be letting people know what Complete Streets means, and then giving a lot of opportunity for feedback from a community members.
I mean, I think that, you know, maybe, so you're thinking maybe September, mid to end of September? I mean, I think that, you know, maybe, so you're thinking maybe September, mid to end of September?
Yep.
For that?
Because I'd like to, I mean, I want to take advantage of that grant, you know, as soon as possible.
And what's the situation when, has anybody spoken with them?
Yes. Yeah, we have confirmed that we are accepting that.
And when is, when are they talking about starting?
I think it's, it's up to us.
Yeah, they haven't really, what they're trying to do is find out how many communities want to take advantage of the consultant. And then they're going to hire the consultant as a, like a group package. Everyone will use the same consultant. So they're trying right now to figure out who wants to participate in that as a, you know, as a group. And then they'll let that, that RFP. So we've got a little bit of time to do this, but probably not a huge.
Although, it would be good, it seems, if we're, if we're in there in the beginning as expressing interest and being, being on board, that maybe we would be at the head of the class to get this consultant instead of waiting, being at the end of the, the end. So that would be encouraging.
And I was just actually on the Active Transportation Team call. So this funding comes from ODOT and the Ohio Department of Health. And we were one of seven communities in Ohio to receive a technical assistance grant. So I thought that was pretty cool.
So, I mean, I think at this point, let's, let's definitely focus on, on August 24th because that's what staff needs to schedule, that's what council, we all need to schedule that. I mean, let's, let's focus on that and decide if that's doable.
Staff is, staff is already on board.
Okay.
All of my staff has already responded.
And I see down here you've got, and what we talked about, because I was at the Active Transportation meeting, what we talked about is, you know, we can just convene a council meeting. And for all council members can be there. We'll just convene a council meeting and go from there.
Right. And, and I have, you know, been working with MVRPC on this agenda. And they've kind of helped talk about what makes sense based on what our goals are. There are a lot of modules that they have for sort of the engineering geeks. So if our staff does want to go deeper, they have that information as well.
So council, are we?
Would this be in the evening then?
No, maybe 30 a.m. to 1 p.m.
Yeah, and, and part of that is we will do a walking audit. I'm recommending three groups. One group that will hit West South College, which has been a target. And obviously, we've done some improvements there with the Sheros. Dayton Street has been proposed. And actually, I think a third group should check out Yellow Springs Fairfield, especially with, you know, the, the safe routes to school coming in and seeing, you know, what else we can do there. But.
We'll need some safety vests for that one though.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess I would, I would, my preference would be downtown, but.
Yeah, we could do that too.
We can, we can figure that out.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll agree that August 24th, 8:30 to 1, per the agenda that Brian has proposed. And then maybe independently, you and the Active Transportation Group can start to look at a forum. Would MVRPC be involved in that? I assume they would be. And, you know, maybe kind of tentatively start to put that together.
Okay.
Okay, do we need, I don't think we need a motion. This is, this is good.
Yeah, I noticed that Steve McQueen has come.
I know, I know. We, I wanted to get finished with old business. We'll move back to special reports and get the HRC annual report. Steve, come on up.
Hello, my name is Steve McQueen. I am now treasurer of the HRC Human Relation Commission. I first want to apologize for the lateness of this report. Long story short, there's been a lot of personal things between illnesses, babies, weddings.
Weddings?
Yeah, weddings, yes.
As in your wedding?
As in my wedding, right. Plus, we also just had a change in all of our positions that are held. So once again, that's why I'm announcing myself as treasurer, no longer secretary. And so we are catch, playing catch-up at the moment. But really, basically, what's because, once we found out that we're really not bidding for a certain amount of money any longer, and that this is more of like, this is what we're doing and this is what we have planned and what we have been doing. This is really just going to be a report of last year. We were able to do a full 14, or support 14 different events and/or month-long things. We supported a lot. And it's, a lot of them are common, like our girls' boys' night out, our block parties, which we do annually. And Y is Pride is another one. And also for the third year in a row, we've done the eighth grade trip in which we've been able to sponsor some of the students. We haven't been able to fully afford, we've been able to work that out with teachers and as well as principal for the middle school. Quants is another one we do every year. But last year, we were able to add the Ninja Self-Defense and Empowerment Program, which was our second year of doing that. But this year, we started the Month of Consent Series, which was for the Month of Women Empowerment and it's like a domestic abuse sort of awareness month. We wanted to contribute to that. Of course, some of these will sound outdated, like we had some things with Chief Hale, but we did also social support for a new chief, which we wanted to make sure that we spoke on. And then, so that was last year. And also, we ended the year with the Indigenous Peoples' Day Resolution, which we were really proud to bring to council. And that is still being worked on today. We've also done some really unique events, something called the Obsidian Launch for Call and Response, which was a program done by a former Antioch professor who came back this year. And we sponsored another event that's called Something Different. But basically, it was a call and response program that was done in a couple of other places, but it ended up making it to a magazine. And the magazine came all the way to Yell Springs, to Antioch, and was able to basically do different projects, some coming out of Kentucky, some coming out of Nevada, other places she's traveled. But we have magazines and there's some at the library. 365 Project also has a copy, the library has a copy. And so we were able to sponsor things like that. So we're very proud of what we've been able to do. And we are still working on more. Of course, our block parties are coming up again. And we already have interest in that. Of course, our eighth grade project, which we were still working on. And once in a while, we are still getting some brand-new ideas. And we're always there to listen and help with the community. And there are still some ideas floating around and we're really happy that we can contribute. And we're really hoping that you will help us be able to contribute to the community. And so, if there are any questions?
I just wanted to talk about a project. The Senior Center has received a grant to do a dementia-friendly Yellow Springs project. And I did mention that they should talk to HRC and, and maybe get some work with youth. Just to, just to, you know, some, some things that could be brought to Village Council. So just something, just something to look for in 2017, 18.
And I am meeting with them tomorrow, so I can reiterate.
If you could pass along the proposal, we will gladly work with them. And we've had to do that a couple of times where proposals come in and we work with people. And we can tell them what they can do and what we can do.
Great.
Absolutely.
Steve, when will the block parties? I wonder, people suggest that.
So the block parties, the, we, actually, the beginning of August is when you can apply for block parties. And once you apply, you will be given a, a bit of a stipend to help that block promote this party and however you're going to do it. And the parties themselves are usually the last half of April and the first half of September. We don't necessarily have an end date, but that's usually about the time because then school begins and we start to get pretty busy again. So we would like for that time period. But the beginning of August, we're going to have things in the paper for people to know where to apply for the stipends for your block party.
Right, and just to make sure they are coming to our office, I think, now.
Correct, but we're just going to, right, we're just going to let you know where you can do this.
Right.
So the village is facilitating them like last year?
The village is facilitating them, yeah. Because that way, we can make sure that Jason's crew gets the bear kids out if they need to close a road. We can, we have to get the gift certificates from Tom so that they can have that. We distribute Chrissy's paperwork for Know Your Neighbor.
Right.
Which is another HRC program. So we do all of that. It was just easier to just do it.
HRC promotes it, the village does the actual.
Well, I want to say I appreciate the work that you guys continue to do. There are two things on my mind. One of them is we don't see minutes that often. And these great projects would be great, you know, to sort of regularly let the community know that, you know, this is intentional spending to, you know, deliver on our village values. You know, so I think that would be nice to kind of get the sort of rationale for why we're, you know, supporting these things on a regular basis. And the other thing I mentioned a couple of times is, I guess, our, you know, our new standard now is to apply for a budget, you know, for all commissions. And I think for you guys in particular, it's easy because as you said, you do the same activities in a lot of ways every year. So I would, I would love for you guys to, to do that.
Full proposal, we can add gladly.
Real simple. I mean, you know, if you look at, I know I shared with you guys what the Arts and Culture Commission did. You know, just a simple sort of, you know, here's what we're doing for education, here's what we're doing for community development. Because that also helps us to continue to have the community support for this kind of work.
Well, a simple response to that, we have a new secretary who is a teacher who's going to be a lot better about that than I previously was a secretary. Good with notes, but the, the other part, we're going to definitely work that out. So she knows, so we're, we're definitely going to make sure that that is definitely done. And then now being treasurer, I should be able to definitely work that out on my own, which I'm very excited to do.
Great.
So now that you have the report, what I'll do is just have a little something formal but simple of this is what's been done, this is what we'd like, but we do understand whatever is given will definitely use to our best ability.
Cool, thanks, Steve.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Steve, and thanks to the rest of HRC.
Thank you very much.
Wait, and so, yeah, so we should hear who's, who are the officers now for the?
So Nick is still the chair. And now Chrissy Cruz is co-chair. I am treasurer. Steve McQueen is treasurer, in case he needs to be there. And Jessica Thomas is now secretary of HRC. And Kate gave up for personal health reasons her position as co-chair, so now Chrissy.
But she's still part of the commission?
Absolutely. That's why I wanted to make sure you knew that Kate hasn't left. She just, is now just a member. And Chrissy has gone to that spot. I took Chrissy's spot. Jessica has taken my position.
Great.
All right.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I will say, we did lose an alternate. We lost Scott.
And we will be, yeah, that's the only other thing is we will, there will be a couple of things in the paper about positions opening, mainly with the alternate position. And there are some people towards, there are some positions, or not positions, but the probability of a position depending on whether people reapply or not as well. So just look forward to maybe that happening, I believe it's November.
Is Cory still?
If Cory and Nick came on at the same time. Nick has definitely talked more about remaining, but Cory is still iffy. So if you do notice something, we'll, we'll know before then. We've already talked with Cory about making sure we have plenty of time so that we can actually apply properly and make sure you guys accept before we give any positions to anyone. But that would be it. And the alternate as well, who did resign.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next is tap fee discussion. We had quite an extensive bit of information in our packet that was prepared by staff. I see they're all here. I will turn it over to Patty to start the discussion.
Okay, as was noted in a brief that I prepared when there was discussion about waiving the Home Inc., the Home Inc. taps, I noted that it actually does cost us more for a water tap than we actually charge people. It costs us more in equipment and the brass and the meter that we put into the pit. And in addition to that, we install it. So at that point, council had asked if we could bring a comparison and further information on tap fees and make suggestions as to what we thought they should be. So staff had been working on this previously, so we all, we actually had a lot of the information. We confirmed that the information was still valid. And so you see there a spreadsheet that has tap fees from several other communities. And the spreadsheet notes the population of those communities and what they charge for each water, water tap, sewer inspection and capacity. And if they have electric, what they charge for that. Because those are the three utilities that we, we generally oversee. They're a little bit different because we actually provide the meter and equipment and install water and electric. But on sewer, Jason does inspection and then we have capacity on that because we're selling the capacity in the system. We can't sell it to anybody else, can't use it for anybody else.
But there's typically not equipment for sewer?
There is not equipment for sewer.
Because our general assumption is what you use for water is what you put back into the system or?
What, yes, the general assumption is that your sewer bill is calculated off of your water read, just like your water bill is, unless there is a reason that it shouldn't be. For instance, we have one business that has, that uses more water than they put back into the system. They use the water in their process. And therefore, they have an actual separate meter for their sewer.
What we actually talked about at the last meeting, at the sewer.
We also, as you talked about at the last meeting, have an allowance for summer watering and pressure washing your house and that kind of thing, which can also affect your sewer. But in general, at a residence or business, your sewer bill is calculated off of the same read that your water bill is calculated on. Because it's assumed that what you're taking out of the system, you're putting back in and it has to go be treated at the water, at the wastewater treatment plant. But no, as far as sewer installation, we do not provide any parts or anything like that. Jason inspects them, he goes out physically inspects them, and then we have the capacity. When we're talking about water, we provide the meter and all the brass fittings and all of the connections in there, and our crews install them. And the same with the electric. We provide the meter and all the connections and our crew installs them.
Could you go through each one? Could you go through water, sewer and electric briefly? And maybe it would be better for the, for the superintendents to do it. And describe when a new meter, you know, because there's something in here about the customer takes it from the residence to the street. So just talk about what exactly in, in a new service is the customer's responsibility?
And Johnny can speak to the water and the electric, and then Jason will need to speak to the sewer.
On the water, we actually, they do all the digging, all the way to the main. They dig around the main. Then the crew actually, we actually tap the main and we provide the curb stop. And then we take about 10-foot of copper all the way to a brass curb stop. And then we bring up one tail for them to be able to hook on to. Then we provide them with a meter bar, two shut-offs, an expansion, a yoke and a meter. That's the only thing we provide on the water. But we actually do all the manual tapping.
So if you give them the, the equipment, does their plumber then install that?
They install the yoke, everything that goes in the meter pit, the plumber installs except for the meter. And then we install.
But we're taking, we only village crew. But we're taking, we only village crew actually touch our main.
Correct, absolutely. Yes. Unless, unless it is over two inches. If it is over two inches, we contract it out.
But you inspect everything, correct?
We inspect it all. We're on site when every tap happens.
Okay.
You ahead?
And I was just gonna say, so I seem to remember the number was like 450 for that equipment cost?
Actually, I got an updated cost, and that is what Patty put in the packet.
Okay.
The only alternative I had, because we've got so many different meter pit designs out there, that if we wanted to go to a standard meter pit, that there was an additional cost that we could add to that, and it was like another $150. But that's if we decided to do that, then we would actually provide them everything that they need for their meter. We actually marked the location, they do the digging. Now, if somebody's moving one from the basement outside, then what we do is, is we would either shut it off at the curb stop and then put the meter in, but we still provide them with the yoke, the two shut offs, the expansion, everything that goes in the meter pit, with the exception of the copper going to the house.
Okay.
The electric is a little bit different. The electric, if they decide to go underground, they're responsible from the house all the way to the pole. If it is overhead, then we provide the wire to the house, and that is it, and then, of course, the meter.
And you install the meter?
And we install the meter, correct.
As you stated, ours is a little easier. All I do is go out and inspect the tap into the main itself. Everything that comes out of the house is approved by Green County. Come on, hold this.
And we do the actual connections? Your crew does the act?
No, the plumber, the contractor will usually core drill the connection into our main, and then they'll insert, and then I'll inspect everything, the saddle that goes around it, and then everything that goes into our main itself, the connection itself.
We, we don't provide anything, right?
Not as far as sanitary.
Okay.
But I will say that one of the changes that is noted in the brief that we're asking for in section 104803, that's because our current code, our current codified ordinance, does not have the upgraded material in it. It has the old, what is it, is it a glaze and tile?
Yeah, it's just a clean-up of language.
Right. And so Jason asked that we update that while we're doing this, we update that section to update it on the.
Can we be, can we, can we potentially make it a little bit more generic, because I know that there are new products, people are looking at new products, and maybe instead of absolutely specifying PVC, we could make it a little bit more generic, or, or say something about approved materials or something, other approved.
Jason and I can talk about that.
Okay. I'm honestly a little surprised, it, you know, these, these cost differences aren't as much as I expected. I mean, Sydney, I don't know what the heck they're doing. Mark better, Mark needs to get on the ball and start raising his rates, his, his tap fees.
Well, yeah, Sydney is lower on, on the small end, where, where the meter is smaller, but then once they hit a certain, they, they go a little bit.
Well, no, I mean, we're higher than anybody. The 12,500 is, nobody is anywhere close to that.
12,500.
Six inch.
Oh, on the current ones, yes.
Yes.
Which is, which is why Johnny wanted to change that to meter plus cost.
And it, and it looks, I mean, I obviously realize that, although, did we talk to anybody? Bowling Green, they don't charge anything for electric?
Uh-uh.
I mean, and they're an AMP community.
Yeah.
Did we specifically look into any other AMP communities?
Well, Lebanon is an AMP community, and they're on there, or they're, no, we took them off, actually, didn't we?
They don't charge anything.
Yeah, that's right. No, they were charging by foot.
They are charging by foot because they, they require the customer buy the wire from them, just like they do for them by foot.
Right. We actually sent out, we actually sent out an email through AMP, and I got several responses, but a lot of them were out of state, and I didn't feel like we should put those on there.
What's the C, I, M is material?
Cost, materials and cost.
Okay.
I thought it was meter and cost, plus cost. Was that what you?
Is it material?
Well, it's all the materials, or is that your meter, plus?
What's M, what's M plus C?
X, R, plus cost.
Plus labor cost.
Right. We would, we would buy the meter, and we would have a contractor.
I mean, it would probably be better to put an L rather than C, because, but, material and labor.
Yeah.
So if we start with electric, what has been the rationale for not charging anything, and why do other municipalities not charge anything?
Because they don't have electric service. There's only one on here that's, that has their own electric.
Right, well, that's, we just talked about Bowling Green, right? They're an AMP community, so.
But they charge, but it's.
No, Bowling Green had no cost listed on their, they had no cost listed on their tap fees for electric.
So is there any logic to not charging a tap fee for electric, or?
I can't see what it would be. I mean, we have to put the meter into it, and our crews have to install it, and, you know, the larger you get on the meter, you know, the more it could potentially cost as far as when you're adding to going from a single phase and on up, so.
I'd like to have more information about electric. I'd like to have specifically more information from AMP communities about electric.
I, I can certainly include all of the ones I got that were from out of state, I mean, I have them, but.
Well, can you, can you make phone calls? I mean, it seems like we should, we can do some outreach to these electric superintendents in other communities.
I guess I would say I don't have a problem charging for materials and labor that we have to provide for electric. It's not that much, the recommendation's 250, so.
So the other question I have is, these numbers are kind of all over the map, so I don't really understand the logic for why it's water sometimes cheaper and sewers sometimes more expensive, or vice versa? I mean, what's?
Well, a lot of communities, I can tell you that on the sewer, a lot of communities charge extra for capacity.
Capacity, okay.
Yeah, you're, you're selling your capacity in the system, and you can, can't therefore sell it to anybody else in, in expanding your sewer, whether it's running a new line, increasing the, the capacity of your plant, or, you know, whatever you're doing, it's gonna cost a lot of money to do that main, because the sewer is, is quite a bit more expensive than water to run. And so the assumption is that once you sell that capacity, unless you do certain upgrades and put a lot of money into the system, you're not gonna be able to sell any, you're gonna reach a finite capacity. And so a lot of communities charge quite a bit more for that. The fee that Jason has suggested is relatively low for us in that. I mean, it's higher than some communities, but it's relatively low compared to others.
Well, it's actually higher than on the other study, except Arcanum.
Well, and I guess that's my other question. So I think water makes.
No, it's, it's the same as Farmsville, Newster.
As far as, you wanna try to look at the four inch, because that's a minimum that you run a residential lateral. Your four inch and your six inch are on the standard. So that's, that's your threshold point, is what you wanna.
So, so are we gonna actually be offering these smaller sizes, or? Okay, so that 750 number really shouldn't be in those columns?
Yeah, 750 number only applies to what?
Four and six.
Yes. It's gonna be going to propose 375 to 750. And then if we have anything larger than a six inch, it will double, just like it does for every other.
Okay. So I guess that's the other piece I wanna understand. So I think I agree with Mary Ann, I mean, you know, cost and labor, or material and cost, or whatever, I mean, that, that seems like, you know, the right thing to do. But Jason, based on what you said about sewer, and, and, you know, I guess what we have to do activity-wise, why 750? Where's that number coming from?
The 375 that we proposed, when we were dealing with contractors, we were almost getting laughed at, it was so low. Because every other community around us charges so much more to make us competitive and to go out and to approve not only my time, but as far as capacity rates and everything else. It just brought us up to a, a board.
Okay.
Well, and, and one thing that I would suggest to council, that you discovered when you talked to who, that they put it into capital?
Wayne'sville, I spoke, a council lady by the name of Kimberly from Wayne'sville. And what, they actually gave their sewer plant away along with three other employees to Warren County because of, Warren County had more to do with the plant. So they, they gave that kind of Warren County, Warren County took it off, but their tap fees were $4,300 for sewer and $4,100 for water, and they put that strictly into capital for improvements. It don't go into the general budget, it don't go back into the water fund, it goes, it's strictly into capital.
And that makes a lot of sense.
And they actually, she told me that they do at least two taps a month for the water.
And even though we have relatively recently upgraded wastewater plant, we're building a new water plant, we still have the system to maintain, and we still have the maintenance on the towers and the plants and everything. I think it's a great idea to be able to put the tap fees into, to capital. I mean, that makes perfect sense to me.
What size water lines are typical, are you typically, or meter?
Typical right now is three-quarter.
For, for a whole?
For residential's three-quarter. We've installed maybe two one-inch since 2014, and then we've had some four-inch with new construction.
So what are we, what are we taking out Dayton Yellow Springs? What's that, what size line is going down to the CBE?
That's an eight-inch.
And then what would you anticipate's going into the CBE at eight-inch?
Probably eight-inch as well.
And then what would you think?
They're gonna use a four-inch water meter.
They'll, they'll need four-inch, okay.
That's what size they had in Illinois.
Okay.
But, I mean, this would be, this would be a good source of revenue for our capital funds, I mean, for all of them, to have these tap fees go there.
It's, it's also, I mean, I think we've got to analyze what it's gonna do for the situations when we are waiving them, because it's going to make these waivers much more significant, which is a positive for the agency, for Home, Inc. That's pretty much what we've been waiving, well, in Antioch College, but it's, it's going to probably cause more question from other users and from other people that want to tap into the system. It's, it's, the inequity is gonna look a little.
Well, I think that's a separate issue. I mean, I think that we should be charging for whatever it is that we have to put out, and I'm fine with what staff has suggested.
Well, and the last thing I'd like to point out is that I did include three pages from the city of Sydney's tap fee ordinance there, and they actually have an area on 75 where they apparently had to run a larger main to, to enable development there, to accommodate it, and so they actually charged quite a bit more in tap fees for that specific area. It's listed separately in their tap fee code there on page two. So we don't necessarily want to do that right now, but it's something that we should keep in, in our minds for the future, that if we have to run a main to accommodate some development, that might be something that council wants to consider at that point. You know, if it isn't grant funded or something.
How would we remember that? The institutional memory?
Melissa's here, she remembers it.
Melissa. So I would say, you know, I'd say you're getting positive response from, from council. I would say I definitely want more information on the electric situation from other AMP communities. Anything else?
Yeah, I guess I'm like Mary Ann, I, you know, with the additional information, I, I still agree with what the staff has come up with.
I, I do want to point out that, that we are, we are getting users. I mean, I absolutely agree that we should be charging, but, but every time we raise these fees, it is a disincentive for development. It, it's probably not huge, but, I mean, I'm, I'm really unhappy to see this, you know, 12,500, which nobody else is anywhere close to. I don't know how that got there. So, I mean, it sounds like from, at the high end of development, we're actually gonna get things under a little bit of control. I mean, would you anticipate that it's maybe, we'll be maybe closer to where Sydney's?
I can give you a firm example. On Lisa and South Gate, I had a valve cut in, and it was on a six-inch line, and it was $6,500. The valve itself was $4,500. So that's something that me and the guys could not do, and it was $6,500, that was for one valve.
And that was, you said that was, what, a six-inch?
That was a six-inch.
Wow.
But you're also talking about a different style valve going into a live line versus a bolt-on situation. I could check, I believe the tap for Zingia Avenue that Dirks Brothers did was in the $12,000 range, and we can look on that, because they, they hired it as well.
Those are huge mains.
Yep.
And, and, and we are getting, we are getting revenue. I mean, the end, at the end of every one of these taps is revenue, is, is utility revenue, so.
The valves are not cheap theirself. The 16-inch valve that we have going to the water plant is almost $20,000 for one valve.
I, you know, something that I wanted, that I've talked to the Economic Sustainability Commission, I'm gonna work on is incentive policies, and I just think that that's something that I, I do think that these kinds of fees, just as we're using them as incentives for Home, Inc., I think that they can be used as incentives for other types of development. So, but I think that, as, as Mary Ann said, that's a different, that's a different discussion, and we can, if we have the policies, if we can articulate it, then we can look at that. But.
I guess the other issue is what Patty raised, or maybe Johnny, about putting the money into the capital improvements. Does that, does that make sense? I mean, if we're only covering our costs, it's, it's money that we're already spending, so I don't.
And it is coming out of operating.
And I will tell you something, Wayne'sville is not a community to use as an example of any sort of fiscal management, so I'm, please don't put that in the paper.
That's okay.
It's on the video.
It's on the video. So what they were doing is, what they were doing, who knows why they were doing it?
Right. Well, I mean, so what I, I mean, I'm not saying that we have to, like, get the details on every community, but I would like to understand a little bit more just about where some of these numbers come from, just to make sure that we're thinking about all the considerations.
Well, I mean, I, I will tell you that the information that I gathered was, for the most part, off of their websites or through emails, so I didn't really ask a huge amount of questions of anybody, because I was just trying to find comparisons.
Right. Well, maybe, you know, maybe just a couple, like Sydney, New Bremen, or whatever, I'm just.
Well, I mean, again, I think, I think if we focus on the AMP communities, you can get the same information from some of these AMP communities. If you're contacting them about electric, you can contact them. And I'm actually gonna be following up with some of these folks about whether they incentivize development, with, if, whether they use utilities as a development incentive. So, so, you know, it wouldn't be bad to kind of focus on, all of us, you know, both of us focus on the same communities, so that maybe we're only making one contact to these people. So maybe you and I can work on that to get, kind of get that collaborative information.
But, but I have to agree with Mary Ann, any type of incentives or whatever you want to do should be separate from.
Right, right. That's what I said.
What we want to set as rates, and, and I'd like to. What we want to set as rates. And, and, and I'd like to get this behind us and move forward. Because it looks to me right now, wood is in money.
Wood is about $250 over water tap. That's just a material.
And I, I would say, short of having more information about the, the electric taps that...
I'd like a better breakdown of the sewer as well. I just, I want to be able to explain, you know, what these, why these changes in fees, just to be very clear. It sounds like the water one, the water one looks clear to me, so...
Are we gonna pass this by resolution or ordinance?
Ordinance.
So would we be ready for an ordinance, or do you, the two of you want more?
Oh, I think maybe one more meeting, you know, one more, bringing maybe more information about electric and, and some of the detail that...
I guess I just want to say, I think this is pretty minimal. I mean, it's nowhere near the comparison to the upgrade, the utility costs that we've exposed people to. I mean, I just don't think it's that big of a deal. But, I have my say.
I tend to agree with that. I just think we should explain it clearly. What, you know, what the 250 is covering, what the 750 is covering. Sounds like for the water, we've got the material costs, so, and the labor cost. So, that's, yeah, I'm not questioning the amounts, I just...
I guess I'll be, well, the electric, the electric is a minimal charge. It's $250 for residential, and that includes the wire and the meter. When it comes to the electric for the commercial side, like for the wastewater treatment plant, then we had to buy a meter, we had to buy CTs, we had to buy PTs, and it was over, I think it's almost $1,800. So that would be the aid to construction for businesses. We actually do charge a fee for net metering, and it is also $250 for the meter itself and for the village to install it. That's what the electric will cover, is the meter and the overhead wire.
Okay.
So that really only leaves that you want a more in-depth analysis of the sewer.
Yeah, I mean, I think Jason responded to it. I just, it would be nice to have that on paper as well.
Okay.
Like with the others, just so, you know, when we are asked, we've got it.
We can do that.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is pocket neighborhood concept presentation. And I see our zoning person here, Denise Swinger, to talk about that.
Okay. Over the past 10 months or so, the planning commission has been working on a new section to the zoning code. It's called pocket neighborhood developments. We've had people that have read that in the paper over that 10 months and have had, just this last meeting that we had, a woman, a senior, come into our planning commission meeting and was curious about what it meant. And then told her story about how she does not want to leave this community, but she has nowhere to go. She can't find a place to move from her big house into something smaller. And I think when we get the housing needs assessment going, we'll be able to discover just that, that we don't have smaller cottage-like housing. So what is a pocket neighborhood development? It's a, it's a type of planned community which consists of a clustering of smaller dwelling units. Typically, they're individually owned on a single lot, and they're managed by a homeowners association. They, they are centered around a courtyard or a common open space. So it really lends itself to more neighborliness, more promoting a sense of community. And the people that live there tend to have an increased level of contact and are more invested in the common open space because they do live closer together. Why have a pocket neighborhood development in the zoning code? Well, planning commission feels that it provides another mechanism for developing on infill lots, which is in line with the 2010 visioning plan and the 2013 zoning code update for infill housing. It's a way to provide housing density on parcels which might otherwise not be used at all, or used for perhaps just one single family dwelling. They're neighborly by design, as I mentioned, as houses are built close together and neighbors have a shared interest in the common areas. There's less environmental impact because there's a reduction in roadways and hard surface areas and more increased pedestrian pathways to connect to. PND zoning is an affordable housing option that fits with village values. PND zoning is also a good way to address the, what we're seeing here with our, our seniors, our older aging population, giving boomers a chance to downsize. Got some samples there of types of pocket neighborhood developments. How does the PND differ from a planned unit development? In the code, we have planned unit developments and it's set up as typically five acres or more. Although you, council has allowed them to be on less than five acres. There is a, you have, there's a rezoning process that you have to go through. There's a preliminary meeting with staff, and there's a, a general meeting with, preliminary meeting with planning commission, then it goes to council, and it goes back to planning commission for final approval, and it can be a rather lengthy process. The pocket neighborhood would be on a lot of any size that's under five acres. And as long as the zoning code requirements are met, pocket neighborhood developments will have uniform zoning requirements. What the planning commission has done is they've written the PND requirements to follow the existing requirements for residential A, B, and C. And so the only place that you can do these pocket neighborhood developments are in those residential districts. Whereas PUDs are essentially what we call spot zoning in that standards are written by the developer and then they're modified by the planning commission and then approved by council, with each planned unit development having zoning requirements unique to that property. Obviously, what happens with that is it makes post-development zoning enforcement very difficult. Although careful consideration would be given to the development of pocket neighborhoods with requirements on both the developer and the village to have the plans reviewed by a certified engineer, the process for a PND is less involved. And lastly, you're not gonna have to do any rezoning at all with the pocket neighborhood developments as, as it will be a conditional use in the three residential districts. There's some examples of some PND site plans. As you can see here, the, yeah, it's just, there's the street to the left, there's parking right at the entrance, and then all of the other space there is walkways getting to that, to the different individual housing. Go ahead. That's another example where they have parking in a couple different places and also have a common area in the middle. That's the single cluster, and you can go ahead and go to the next one. This one is interesting. It's the single cluster two. If you notice at the, on the right-hand side, there's two existing houses. So what happened was, and we do have cases in Yellow Springs where we have landlocked areas, so pocket neighborhoods could, could happen in, in that case too. You can see that where one, the one existing house at the top facing the street then allowed for an access to get back to those cluster of homes. And that's just another example of the same.
Is there, is there accommodation for vehicles at the residence itself?
No.
Never?
Mm-mm.
Okay. I guess I'm just thinking if this, if these are for seniors.
What, what we have, what the, in the conditional use requirements, the parking area has to be within 50 feet of each of the units. So it's gonna have to be some creative ways where they'll put, and they can have garages, but the garages would be all in a row, like a, like a carport garage. And then the pathway to get to the house.
Is there a minimum or maximum area, size area for these?
Square footage for the home, you mean?
No, no, for the pocket neighborhood itself.
You mean lots of...
No, I don't, I mean, does it have to be at least an acre?
Well, what, yeah, what, what we have in the code right now is you can have up to six units per acre in residential A, up to eight per acre in B, and up to 14 in residential C.
But there's no minimum or maximum size for the pocket neighborhood itself?
We, we put in a minimum of four.
Four units?
Four units.
So it'd have to be whatever, some portion of...
There has to be, yeah, at least four, because you have the HOA.
Two-thirds of an acre.
Right, I mean, there has to be...
There has to be, yeah. Otherwise, we could have, like, people just putting one house here and here and here.
Right. So there has to be some sort of plan, I mean, there, there has to be a plan, there has to be an organizational and a management, a construction management and administrative after-the-fact way of managing the neighborhood.
Right.
Because it's common area, it has to be maintained.
Exactly. And what I found out about HOAs, typically, in Green County, if the developer himself, herself, himself doesn't create the lot lines, pretty much invisible lot lines, the Green County engineer will do that. And so each of the houses will have a lot line, it could be just a paper lot line that you would see maybe if you went to GIS, but that lot, that area, the house and the ground beneath it, you pay the taxes on that. Then the common areas, there's no tax. And by law, they're not required to charge, they're not allowed to charge tax for the common area.
Oh, that's interesting. And what's the, what's the percentage of, what percentage of property do they, around each residence? Is it like a few feet?
We, we are saying each, it's 10 feet between eaves as well. And I, I would get into that a little bit more. This, that, this is kind of the overview right now, but let me just review the, I already mentioned that's allowed in the three residential districts. So the density and minimum lot area requirements will follow the corresponding district. So in residential C, 50% of the area has to be, well, I think that's RA, 50% of the area has to stay green or a common open space. I think that also maybe can include the parking as well. I'm not sure, I'll have to check on that. The, the other thing with the PND being on a single lot, the setbacks will follow the perimeter. So if the setback is 20 feet, that's for the, that's for the perimeter of the property. And then the sides' perimeters as well. If it's 10 feet in that residential district, that's what they have to work with.
Are these all single-family?
Typically, they are single-family, but planning commission decided to not go down that road completely and followed the zoning code and is allowing two-family and single-family attached in RBNR C, but they cannot make up more than 50% of the mix. So that there's still some diversity of housing options.
Denise, would this include the, I know that when we were talking about Antioch College Village, there were some options that included contiguous units that had a common living space, like a common kitchen and living room area, but had four individual apartments off of the sides. Is that anything that is permitted in a?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, no. These are all, they're, they're individual dwelling units around that courtyard or common open space area. They'll have to have 200 feet of private yard and then, and at least an additional 200 feet of common yard for each, each house.
So cohousing would be different. If somebody wanted to do cohousing, that would have to be a PUD.
That's what she's talking about.
But that would be a PUD.
That would have to be on a PUD, yeah. Let's see, they, we are also going to allow up to 50% to be rented. No more, as I mentioned, no more than 50% can be two-family or single-family attached. And that's an and/or. In RBNR C, in residential A, they have to be single-family. The common open space and parking areas under the HOA, Level B site plan review is gonna be required. We want to have a village contracted engineer that approves the report and files a report, give to planning commission about the stormwater runoff. We want to make sure that the developer is, you know, is taking careful consideration with making sure that there's not gonna be any impact on the neighbors.
Denise, you just said that a maximum of 50% could be rented?
Yes.
And, and what's the purpose for that?
Typically, they are just single-family owned and they're not rented. But the planning commission just felt just to, because we have an issue with rental property, that there should be no reason why they, someone couldn't build it, build it and use it as a rental.
So is there any, has there been any discussion on planning commission of how this could potentially interface with the Airbnb situation? Is there, is there the ability for these to be short, to be transient rentals?
They really didn't consider that. Didn't, yeah...
It should probably be thought about.
Hmm, yeah.
I mean, somebody could build an entire Airbnb community.
No.
Well...
Only 50% could be rented.
Oh, well, they could still build a pretty big one. And if individual, if individuals were subletting, I mean, there could be a possibility of, you know, are, is it, is it residents, do they, do people have to actually live?
Yes.
In the residence?
Yes.
Well, I mean...
Except for the 50% around.
The 50% around.
But with the parking being at a minimum, it could be very bad if that 50% were Airbnb.
Right. I mean, it's something...
Yeah, it's something to consider. And then if council approves the concept, you can go to the next one, I think. There's a set number, go ahead and go, we already kind of went through the, here we go. Sorry. You go back, yeah. There's eight sections of the zoning code this would affect. The design standards under the planning code will need to be amended, amended to regarding the subdivision regulations. The scheduled uses residential districts, obviously, we'll add that as a conditional use in RA, RBNR C. 126004, principal use per lot, PNDs will be added as an exception to the requirement of only one principal use per lot. And I think, what was the next one? Can you go to the, is there, yeah. Then we'll add parking requirements. I think they went with 1.5 per dwelling. And then we're gonna have some changes in definitions. We're going to remove, another definition of this is called cluster housing, but we're calling this pocket neighborhood development. So we'll take out cluster housing. It doesn't happen to be anywhere, anywhere else in the code. And we'll replace it with pocket neighborhood development, the definition for that. Under the other definition, we're putting in a definition of HOAs. And let's see, the last one is the pocket neighborhood. And, oh, we also added common open space. We made a definition of that.
So it looked like, I thought I noticed on the August 21st meeting that, that this is being proposed to come back as legislation for the August 21st meeting. Is that, it will be two readings as an ordinance, is that correct? Or was it the September meeting?
I think it's coming back August 21st.
Yeah, I'd say it's August 21st.
So because you're not having a meeting...
Right.
Right, which gives, will give planning commission a chance to go back and add anything so we can talk about this as far as the rental and the Airbnb.
Is, so is council inclined to keep that on the agenda or to, I would agree?
Yes.
Is it something you're interested in doing?
Oh, definitely, yeah. I mean, I, I am.
Yeah, we just feel, I mean, we really tried to put a lot of things in place, though the impact, especially in residential A, you know, we, we really hope that with, between the requirements for the lot coverage, the requirements for the parking, the setbacks, we'll have other requirements on making sure visibility. We're, we're gonna work with people to make sure there's not an impact on, on neighbors.
Okay.
Okay. I have one question, is it thought that the houses would tend to be small, or is that not necessarily the case?
They tend to be small, Planning Commission didn't put in a minimum, because we don't have a minimum, but they tend to usually be between 800 and 1,200 square footprint. They also tend to be about 24 to 28 feet high, we didn't put that in either, we left them as high as 35.
You didn't have size requirements at all?
But just, so it's just what's already in the code?
Yeah.
Yes.
Dan?
Dan? Come on over.
Perhaps don't go too far. Dan Reyes, I just want to ask a question on this, if I might, and maybe it's as much making a suggestion, if it's an agreeable question. The village is a, you know, a known entity in most ways, and familiar to all of us, and the new proposal that was coming up, it seemed to me that we had some sketches to look at that were abstract, general, but I'm kind of curious about the actual impacts on the village, and if there might be some, whether Planning has already done this, or might do, an inventory of applicable lots, or at least a sampling of applicable lots where this new instrument might be used or implemented, rather than an abstract representation of some elsewhere that's not in the village. Now, to have some idea of how many lots, or what might be an example of an actual lot?
There is one being proposed for the Home Inc. property on Zine Avenue, so there's one.
And I think that part of what we're asking for in the housing needs assessment is to identify the different places that something like this could potentially go.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, because we know that we have, you know, a couple of larger lots in the village, that this would be perfect, you know, that could accommodate this, so...
Are you referencing specifically the density issue?
You know, I haven't read all of the details of what's proposed at this point, I could probably, you know, in a lot of ways, use my experience and imagination to project this onto the sort of different lot stock that is in the village, but I, my sense is that people probably don't get that right off if they hear this introduction to the new category that's being proposed, and it might help make it for, you know, in a lot of ways, clearer to people in the village to understand some of the examples that really prompt this.
Well, it's also tough when we're talking about private property, I mean, it's not in the village's or Planning Commission's role to start to talk about what could or should happen to other people's private property.
Yeah, our, as we got into it, was giving people another option, and we did have two people specifically come to talk about it.
So that there happened some proposals?
Yeah, and at our meetings, people have voiced their opinions and so forth, so, you know, we didn't do it in the back end.
Well, and I think we could, I mean, maybe we could have, have the, what is it, Glen?
Cotages.
Glen cottages as an example, I mean, if we want, if we want to literally see a site plan as to how it would, how it would lay out in a site plan.
Well, I think, but they haven't developed their full site plan yet, just phase one, correct?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, much like the 2013 zoning code update, it took really a couple of years for people to realize, I can actually subdivide my lot now and create another lot, I mean, it's catching on slowly, and I think that this is just another tool in that development toolbox that we have, that will give people an opportunity, wow, we can actually have a dense, dense area, and it meets our infill needs.
And that was really the intent, one of the major intents of the zoning code rewrite was to allow increased density.
Yeah.
So I'm, you know, I'm up for it coming to the August 21st meeting as a first reading, and so Planning Commission will be revisiting it, so these couple of things that came up would be good.
If I'm correct, Airbnb and something on rentals.
I'm sorry?
Airbnb, just clarifying that piece.
AirBnB and then short-term rentals.
Yeah. Okay, great. Next, we have staff reports. Patty, start with you.
Okay, the Rumpke contract, the extension on the Rumpke contract that council approved in the previous meeting has been signed, so we are contracted with Rumpke through August 31st of 2018. The solar array, AEP and Ducktail Solar have started construction on the fence around the future solar array, the fence is about half done, and the excavation for the underground conduits has begun. We still expect the ribbon cutting in August, Johnny, is that correct?
Oh, I'll be tuned about two weeks.
Okay.
Trying to find your word.
So, but we do ask the citizens to remember, this is a construction site, I know that people are used to walking the glass farm, and that, you know, it is a nice, beautiful, open area, but this is a construction site, there are excavated trenches out there and other things, so please do not walk back in the area where the solar array is being constructed.
Are they doing anything to block it?
They are placated, they're...
They're putting signage up.
Yeah, it's, but it's not being surrounded by tape or censer or anything?
It's a pretty huge...
Actually, the fence is almost 90% done, they actually was out there today, so the containment, the solar field will be contained probably by the end of the week.
Okay.
My concern with the citizens walking back here is, is they're bringing trucks and trailers and excavation equipment to unload semis, and we got a tight turn in there by some trees, and if somebody's walking around there, you can't be seen right away, and there's a potential that somebody could get hit. So we are going to put signage up to warn them not to be walking back here just for safety reasons. If they want to see back in there, and they want to call Patty and schedule a time, we can take them back there and show them, I mean, it's an exciting thing for the village. So I had some people today from Cedarville that wanted to look at it, and I took them back here, showed them what was going on, and they was good with that.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Dan Yellistings Road Infrastructure, Major's Enterprises is finishing up a job, and he should be back out there next week, they're going to mow it, and then they're going to start with the rest of the installation out there. The Bryant Center parking policy, you see that's in there from the last meeting, we did have some problems with parking at the Bryant Center, so staff is working on a policy for when people have events here, to try to make it safe for emergency vehicles to get in and out as needed. The burning of the Sutton Farmhouse has been delayed until September, doing, due to a problem with RAPCA, which is the state, they have to give the permit to do that, and they've kind of held that up a little bit. The utility power at the water plant has been completed, and the project is still moving along ahead of schedule. Bryant Center generator, Green County has been holding up that permit, but we hope to have that done back to us by the 1st of August, so that the crews can get that installed, the generator that was sitting out at Sutton Farm, and we've repurposed it now for the Bryant Center. As I mentioned, there will be the RCAP training on Thursday, and this place is going to be packed, they'll be in the gym most of the day, and then out in the field for the field demonstrations, so please pay attention to the map closures, well, to the closures that we'll post, Jason, if you can get those to me, we'll post those on Facebook for everybody to see. And I do have one announcement that is not on my, on my report. I did post internally, we have a vacant position for Director of Public Works, and I did post that position internally because I wanted to gauge the interest level and the qualifications of the internal candidates we have before posting it outside, and so I have posted that, and Jerry has kindly consented to interview with me, the candidates, whomever applies internally, but I do not intend to fill this position until we have the final budget talks in the fall, because I know, I did get an email today from a concerned citizen who, you know, wondered what kind of budget impact this would have, and so I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that, yeah, we're going to do that, we're going to gauge the interest internally first, but we're not going to fill that position until we talk about the budget here in the next few months.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Melissa?
I didn't put anything formal in the packet, I've spent the last two weeks covering vacations, so just trying to keep myself afloat.
And I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy? Well?
I do.
Okay.
This is a long one. We assisted Miami Township Fire Rescue with one overdose so far this month, subject was transported and is in good condition. The PD has started a park and walk routine, which you are aware of, officers will be parking in residential areas and walking for a few blocks. I'd like to ask, if you have the time, step out as a resident, introduce yourself, the officers would love to, you know, meet, have a conversation, and don't be alarmed if you see them walking by.
I actually walked with Officer Meister this evening, myself.
Fantastic. We are seeking volunteers to assist for the following two projects, they're just in the initial stages, but I'm excited about them, one is basketball with cops in the Bryant Center gym this winter. Also, we'd like to sponsor a movie night with the PD, which I think could be fun, maybe once a month, blankets, pillows, popcorn.
Here in the gym?
In the gym, and so we're looking for volunteers, as well as anyone to help us with the technical side of this. Contact me anytime if anyone's interested. As always, interested in feedback regarding interactions with the officers, I'll be as often as I can, weekly, sending out an email to council with some of the little things that have taken place during the week that citizens yourself may not be aware of, but I think have merit in all of us knowing. It also brings us a little closer to the relationships between ourselves and council. So, two things, Brian, I'd like to thank you for the Rails to Trails, working with us for the donation on bicycles, so we found a great way to facilitate, rather than selling bicycles on Gov. deals, we now donate them to Rails to Trails, and through several sponsors, we'll find some kids who need bikes. The rest of the bicycle parts and pieces that we can't use will be donated to a school in Springfield that teaches kids how to repair bikes, so thank you for that, Brian. Question for council, Patty gave me permission to ask. I would like to, I know we're going to be redoing the parking lot here soon and talking about those things, but in the meantime, I'd like to see if you are okay with us removing the giant U's that are at the turnaround right here, we've had some issues with animals and some security issues at night, we can't see past them, they've definitely reached their term, and these are large evergreens, not a type of sheep.
I'm wondering.
So...
Please remove them, please, those things are so...
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure, and any questions or anything?
Oh, by the way, I did send Brian a note saying that when we get ready to walk the West House College at Grant Street up to Dean and Rowe, on our circle, Paxton Library area, with one of the officers.
Appreciate that, Jerry, and I think Saturday's our first Black awareness in, and so I think that's at 1:00 at the hotel, anyone wants to join, I'll be there, I'm excited, my father will be coming to town, and he's going to spend the day with me there, and the night, the evening with my family, so...
Nice.
If you see us, we'll be out, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Thanks.
Judy?
Yeah. It's been busy, lots of public records requests lately, we accomplished the proper destruction of a lot of outdated records last month, and then Records Commission met again on Friday to update the RC2, that's now gone into Ohio History Connection for, I hope, approval, to better accommodate some of the PD's records, so that they can get rid of a lot of backlog, hopefully. I will be gone for a long time, do not rent my office as an Airbnb, please, and I'll be back in to work on the 7th, and I just wanted to thank council for, several years ago, agreeing to cancel that first August meeting so that folks could take vacation, I really appreciate it. And Kathy Gudel will be in the office 9:00 noon Monday, Wednesday, Friday, to pick up public records requests, emails, voicemails, all kinds of stuff, and Ruth Ann's going to help her with that as well, so thanks to everyone.
And Judy, why are you making regular phone check-ins? Why don't you just do, if somebody really needs something, they can text you, or they can call you, but don't...
Well, no, they can't actually, on this island.
Oh, because of where you are, oh, Vial Haven doesn't have...
Well, how about this, how about if we need you, we'll text you, and when you hit the mainland, you can check your phone, and if there's nothing there, you don't have to call. Darn, yeah, yep, we'll do.
Have fun, thanks. So, future agenda item...
I'd like to thank Denise for putting her little report in around planning, zoning, and economic sustainability, so we kind of see what that type of traffic and activity that she's doing as a zoning person.
Right.
Yeah, thanks.
You know what, Karen, before you do that, I did this really bad thing, probably completely subconsciously left out the council reports section, and it's the second meeting in the month, and we're going to do that.
Okay, so, okay, council, I don't have the list, but start there and start, just, we'll start with Mary Ann to do reports.
Well, I was not at the last HRC meeting, I was out of town, I frankly, I wasn't prepared, I don't remember what we did, anything else.
Okay, so, you know...
Well, I guess I can say, in terms of the Environmental Commission, we've been working on the Climate Action Plan, sort of trying to move pieces of that together, as I mentioned, the other project on the glass farm is moving along the wetlands construction. I haven't met with the mediation program, I know the Justice Task Force has been meeting, I didn't go to that last meeting.
About all I remember. Okay, Jerry?
Okay, for planning, Denise gave the report on pocket neighborhood, we also had some discussions about the report. I call them blank, that we said we're going to take up in August.
Comprehensive.
Comprehensive, yeah, we'll be taking that up in August.
Okay.
So the Economic Sustainability Commission is now able to focus on two key goals, one is reestablishing the revolving loan fund, so we are hoping to have a proposal, recommendation for council, ideally in August, but we'll see how that goes, and the second thing that Karen referenced was the village incentive policy, so really kind of formalizing what incentives, if any, we would offer, and so we expect a recommendation on that for council as well. A very exciting thing besides the new veto ward that I mentioned at the House of Om, so definitely show up for the event on the 24th, but also, the Arts Council, actually Nancy Mellon has attended our last two meetings, and we are talking about bringing the Arts Council's permanent collection back to its proper home, which is the Bryant Center, and that would mean that we would have art on a regular basis, so we're still working on that, and Patty, there'll be some things that I think Nancy will want to talk to you about as well, just related to, you know, responsibilities with curating and whatnot, but that, I think, will be amazing, and, you know, part of that is contingent on what happens currently, it lives at AUM, but the idea of having it closer to our community members to enjoy is pretty exciting.
Okay, I mentioned the chamber meeting that's happening this Thursday about cybersecurity, and the RPC, we did not have a... And the RPC, we did not have a July meeting, and actually, I don't think we're having an August meeting. And regional planning, we have a meeting tomorrow. There is a huge, the, the new cluster mailboxes that are now going to be required in all-new development, that's something for you. Are you following up on that?
Yeah.
Because it's, I mean, they are, they are holding fast. There were three people from the post office there. They are holding fast to that, and they're really not anything new, absolutely. They're going to require that. So clearly, it makes more sense for it to be built into the development so that it can be a logical, logical access and visually appealing. So that's important, and it's not going over well with a lot of developers, I can tell you that. And interestingly enough, Green County Regional Planning and the trustees didn't care. They have no sympathy for the developers, which is very unusual, so that was interesting. Basically said, you know, the post office is making a, making a rule, we're not going to, we're not going to worry about it, so you've got to follow it. I think that's really about it as far as Green County is concerned. I think that there may have been a couple of other communities in Green County, specifically Beaver Creek Township, that actually was part of a medical marijuana zoning, or medical marijuana application. So I know that they did, they were working with somebody, and they did approve the zoning for at least one facility, because I think that's probably it for my stuff. So future agenda items, we are not meeting in August. The first meeting in August has been canceled. We've been doing that for a few years now, so people can all get a break. Our next meeting will be August 21st. A resolution consenting to the Gustafson Annexation is on the agenda. Ordinance imposing a lodging tax, financials for July, tap fee increase discussion. I guess we did actually say to just go ahead and bring legislation?
Did we?
No. Oh, no, 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 one more, one more discussion, one more discussion. And then the pocket neighborhood zoning.
And you want a council goals feedback on the 21st?
Well, let's just keep it on the 5th, because I think that's going to be a busy meeting. So let's, you've got it on the 5th. We are going to need a 6:00 executive session on the August 21st meeting for personnel, personnel issues that we'll figure out the proper language for. And I would like to take the liberty of, because of the, of the, of the maybe difficulty understanding or confusion around the lodging tax, I would like to ask Chris to talk about what exactly is being proposed and what this legislation for, on the 21st will look like, because I don't know that it's been clear to everyone, and I want all citizens to understand what council is talking about being covered. Is that okay? If we do that? Chris, can you review the?
And I have a couple things for the agenda.
Like now?
Oh, now, sure.
Yes.
No, I, I just wanted a couple things about the agenda.
Okay, well, let's, we hear from Chris, and then we'll talk about that.
Closer than usual. Well, fundamentally, I think that, I'll just kind of give an overview of what I envisioned the legislation to look like conceptually, because I think council will still need to weigh in on some of the details, because there's some policy aspects to it. But fundamentally, I think that people have to understand that there are, there are three broad contexts. Words have been thrown out that have common meaning, but they have, under the law, specific meaning. So the lodging tax, as I understand it from the public discussions that we've had, is really intended to capture transient guests. That is defined under the Ohio Revy, Revy's Code of individuals or groups, whatever it might be, but they rent a room for 30 days or less. That is the definition that's used throughout the state. That a lodging tax is intended then to capture someone who is in, who operates a facility that rents one room up to more, whatever that is, but the guest stays for 30 days or less. And within our zoning code, we also have a definition for short-term rental. That is somewhat confusing. A lodging tax for transient guests is not the same thing, same thing as a short-term rental. Currently, under our zoning code, the, there is an application process because a short-term rental would be a conditional use. So we, the council has to consider whether or not a person who wants to operate a, a business for purposes of transient guests, whether or not that should be a conditional use or a permitted use. Some considerations for that would be that there would be a registration process of some kind for those engaged in the business. That way, the village would know who's doing what, and there would be a means to track who's responsible for paying the, the lodging tax. There has been, we've reviewed sample ordinances, or not samples, but ordinances from other communities, and there's a way that we can create an enforcement mechanism that is not, that is not a burden, that's not draconian, that's not harsh. It simply says, please register the business. The burden to pay the lodging tax is upon the guest, the transient guest. However, the responsibility of collecting that tax falls to the operator of the business. And then, of course, the, we know that the percentage of the tax can be up to 3%. So what I would envision is that there would be a presentation to council, or we would present to council, an ordinance that would have the structure that would go into our codified ordinances, that would include what the purpose of the lodging tax is, definitions of what a transient guest is, what establishments the lodging tax is, lodging tax is meant to be imposed upon, which in this case would be someone who's engaged in the business of renting one room or more to a transient guest of less than 30 days. In addition to that, there will be a mechanism that I'll have a chance to go over with Patty and Melissa on how the village would go through the registration process, figure that out so that it's not burdensome. Again, we've got some templates that other communities have used that seem to work pretty well. So the idea here is that we don't want to overburden village staff. We don't want to make it a cumbersome process for villagers who are engaged, or others who would be required to register, and we want to make the ability to capture this percentage, up to 3%, really as simple as possible, and then the village could, again, you know, use that revenue and go towards the general fund. So that's, that's a high-level concept.
I mean, and I think that's great. I mean, I think, I think that that is a good, you know, I didn't intend for there to be discussion or, you know, debate on council, it was more just to kind of frame the discussion a little bit more definitively, and, and so I think you did that.
So I have a question. So within this, that would, I assume, include people who rent out an apartment or a house as a short-term rental?
That, we want to use the word transient guest, because short-term rental is not, is not the terminology.
As people who rent out an apartment or house for transient guests, and people who rent out bedrooms for transient guests.
Yes, that, the intention is to capture that business activity with one room or more.
Okay, got it.
So that all that, all of those people engaged in that, that enterprise would be treated.
And so therefore, if a council person does either of those things, they will, they, what, is it it-so-facto? Have a conflict of interest and will not be voting on this, correct?
Need to recuse.
No, I checked with the Ethics Commission, and there would not be a reason for a council member solely on the basis of the fact that they may operate such a business to recuse themselves from voting. And we've got enough time. If council would like me to get, it would take a couple weeks, but I can get a formal opinion from the Ohio Ethics Commission on that before the August 21st meeting, which might make some sense, just so there's no misunderstanding there. So if council so directs me, I shall do it.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Okay, so we're, thanks, Chris, that was helpful.
Thanks.
So we're, we're still on track for that ordinance at the August 21st meeting, okay? Anything else?
Yeah. Regarding the housing needs assessment process, I'd like to know if council is comfortable with Patty and probably Karen and I working on the housing needs RFP and not coming to council for approval. That's question one. And the other thing is that I'd like to come to the next council meeting with an initial proposal for a task force, housing task force, for just discussion purposes only.
And why would, why are you proposing the RFP would not come to council?
In case, well, I'd like to be able to have it done by the, well, I guess it could. It probably won't really be done before the August 24th. Initially, it was a timing thing.
Well, I mean, you wanted to let it by the end of August, correct? So, I mean, yeah.
That's the end of August. The meeting is the end of August.
Well, no, it's, isn't it the 21st? So, so we could, it could still come to council on the 21st and get comments and...
Well, we'll have at least a draft done. I have, I've done a little bit, but we're meeting in the morning, so.
Okay.
And I think the work on the task force sounds great.
So you're, so we will do a housing needs assessment discussion, the RFP review?
Yeah.
And, you know, and whether we, whether we take the time, maybe at that point, council can decide if they actually need it to come, maybe it can be passed with a motion, because it's been decided, right, that we do not need legislation for an RFP, right?
Not for an RFP, just you need it to let the contract after the RFP.
Okay, so, you know, we have done legislation for RFPs. If council is so inclined, after we discuss it and you review it at the next meeting, perhaps you'll decide that that isn't, that step isn't necessary. So you're saying, Mary Ann, the task force also, or do you want to maybe?
I'd like to come.
Maybe on the 5th?
With a proposal, a draft proposal.
Okay. What about?
For discussion.
What about the 5th, doing that on the 5th?
Okay.
Just because we're getting a really full agenda on the 21st?
Okay.
Okay, and what, what are you calling it, housing task force?
Yeah.
We don't have a lot farther down the agenda. I'm sure that will grow. Okay, and we actually do need a very short executive session for the purpose of the discussion of potential litigation, if I could get a motion for that.
Some move?
Second.
Wintrae? Yes. Pouch?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Queen?